All right, well, good evening, everyone. It is 6:35 and I will call us to order for our planning board meeting of October 17th. And thank you all who made it to the site visit. And for those who were not at the site visit, we just did a site visit for one of our applications this evening, at 5:30 this evening. And I will now read the roll. So John, present?
Here.
Sue?
Here.
Phil?
Here.
Neil?
Present.
Mike?
Here.
And Matt?
Present.
And alternates, Zach is not present. Michael Bouchard excused himself. He made our site visit but could not make our full meeting. Brad?
Yo.
Molly?
Here.
And Jason?
Here.
All right. So we do have a full, regular board this evening, so I will not cede any alternates as voting members, but of course, as always, you're like, you're welcome to contribute.
Though we are, though we don't have Mark.
We don't have Mark.
Oh, oh, he's not on here, but we still have an opening spot.
Yes.
See, I read through this and didn't see the, anybody not here, but of course, we're down one total member. So, in that case, as the next ranking member, Brad, would you like to be seated as a voting member this evening?
What's that? Excuse me, I'm sorry, I was.
Would you like to be seated as a voting member this evening? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder, Joseph. I just, I just saw everybody's name being read out and I was like, they must all be here. Yeah. All right. Review of minutes from our October 3rd meeting. So you should all have a copy of that, of those minutes, and I didn't see anything in my reproof.
I would commend whoever wrote the minutes, whether it was Joseph or, or not. I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved as written. Communications received.
Yes, so communications, we did receive a few, several in the board's packet which pertain to the application on the agenda, that is, the Beach Hill Road Site Plan Review application. We received letters from a number of abutters, I believe there were a total of four, and then since the packet was sent out, there has been one additional letter sent to the board, which was hand-delivered yesterday, or today, actually. So, that one was on the top of the packet, and the applicant, or the abutter who provided that letter, did ask if the board, when the time comes, could read the letter out loud. That's the one with the blue highlight.
And just to clarify, so this is the one from Robert and Crystal Skinner?
On, dated the 16th.
Dated the 16th. And so, in a sense, this one kind of supersedes the other letter from Crystal Skinner in terms of reading out loud and?
This was the one she requested be read out loud, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And then we also received letters from Stephen Woodbury, Katie Badalak, and there was also a letter with regards to the discussion about building heights and view sheds, which included a photograph of a building that was situated, perhaps not with the view shed in mind, in another, in a development in North Carolina. So that had to do with last meeting's discussion about the Tenney Mountain overlay, potential Tenney Mountain overlay zoning change. And then we had one other letter from Colin Delargy, who asks the planning board if they would consider a zoning amendment that has to do with temporary signs. So, he kind of details what he perceives as an issue with the current way we define and regulate temporary signs, and he proposes a zoning change that he feels would, would improve the, the temporary sign ordinance. So just to clarify, these are kind of those pennant or flag signs that you see related to a sale or a special event that's taking place at a business. So that's also in the packet and has, you know, some, some sample language, so the, the board, you know, it's, it's worth sort of refreshing on the few different ways that zoning amendments can be brought forward. He's asking the planning board to take this up as a planning board proposed amendment. The select board also has the right to propose amendments, and citizens also have the right to petition a zoning amendment. So even if the planning board were not to take it up as a, as a zoning amendment, there is still that petition avenue. But the zoning, the planning board, I should say, also does have the ability to, it just depends on if the board is, is interested in adding this to the list of planning board proposed.
Did, did the citizen who wrote the letter, is he aware that he is able to petition a zoning change on his own?
I'm not sure. He spoke to Scott, so I haven't had direct communication with him.
It might be worth reaching out to him, just to notify him that there, yeah, that there is a, a petition zoning change process if he wanted to go through that.
The deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah, the deadline is?
December 11th.
Yep. So it's 90 to 120 days, I believe, before town meeting, so.
So the first day is November 11th to petitions.
Oh, sorry, November 11th.
November 11th.
A month ahead, sorry.
You just scared me for a second.
We have more time than we need.
And the last day is December 11th. So I'm just gonna kind of respond to some of this if I can right now. As far as the letter about the view shed issues, I think we should return to that at our next meeting, which I think is the 7th of November, our work session, when we're actually talking about Tenney Mountain. It seems to make sense. With regard to the signs, if we do want to look at that for this year, we'd have to put it on our agenda for next meeting, for to even think about doing that. I'm thinking personally that it's a little bit late for this year to really be thinking about another amendment, and kind of get our heads around that, and the implications, and thinking through the whole thing. It might be worth us keeping on our radar for the following year, and I'm not forgetting that this was proposed, at least on the planning board side. Again, if it's, if we want to do, or if an individual wants to do a citizens petition zoning amendment, they can still do that, but for us on the planning board, we have a lot on our plate, and to add something this late, that might be complicated as well, seems difficult.
I, I agree. I, I do see the value in, in the observation that, that was submitted, but in terms of a priority for us as a board, I think it's pretty low on the list compared to other things we're, we're considering. But, you know, I, I would recommend that this gentleman, if he really feels strongly about it, that he could consider petitioning the zoning amendment himself, if, if he feels like he wants to go forward with it this year.
Or alternatively, just waiting for next zoning season, and we can bring it up as a board, and get public feedback, and go through that process.
Where was that letter?
It was in the packet towards the end. Is that, was it the last letter?
Uh, it was, um, yes, it was the second to last letter. It has a date of?
It's handwritten?
No.
It's dated October, it's just before the handwritten one.
Okay.
It's dated October 10th.
And it's pretty detailed, it's like several pages.
It's about four or five pages long.
Oh, I see.
It's not, it's not, it's not the view shed one.
It's after the view shed one.
I missed that.
It might be that, it's best science, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Problem.
All right. And Joseph, you mentioned, I'm gonna, I guess it could be other business as well, the CIP issues. Or we can just, I guess, I'll underwrite myself a note to take, to come back to that for other business. There were some CIP issues about committee, committee and all that.
Oh, yeah, so the, just sort of the charge and purpose statement that the board originally looked at, asked the board to approve the list of CIP members, so I think we have a, a proposed list of CIP committee members for the board's consideration, and?
That's for next year, though, right?
For this coming, CIP, or for this CIP cycle.
So, perhaps number seven, other business, we can just cycle back to that.
We're at our next working meeting, even?
So the timing for the meetings is, is fairly soon.
Okay.
They're not?
Yeah, we're gonna try to start meeting, like, right off.
So, if we can do it tonight, and I, I don't think it's complicated, it was just a matter of approving the list, and we're good to go. So it shouldn't really take more than a few minutes unless there's any contention about who's on it.
That's fine.
Yeah. Which you never know, but. All right. In that case, applications. First, on our list, is a site plan review application for Hamilton Way, review for completeness of application and possible acceptance, public hearing on an application from Three Lakes Properties to establish and expand a retail landscape material sales and retail greenhouse space on the subject parcels located on both sides of Hamilton Way. And?
We do have another, we do have some information from the applicant on this one.
I was gonna look for that, thank you. Joseph?
Yeah. I'll just, I can read the, the message that we got from the applicant. So, Colby Lenantine of Three Lakes says, "At the moment, I do not have a lot of new information, but what I can tell you is I have hired Kent Brown Engineering to help out, but will need more time to complete his work. Last week, he was on vacation, being moved around by the hurricane. Therefore, I was not planning to attend this coming meeting, for I have no new information at the moment. Will need another month or two to complete, so I wish to continue until then."
So, just as a reminder to everyone, so we did not accept this one as complete yet, which means we have not actually opened a public hearing officially on this application. I think we did take some public feedback, but not an official public hearing, so we don't really have to continue a public hearing. It is worth considering, depending on how long out this goes, since public got notice for, for a previous meeting, and, at what point do we need to consider if this becomes a new application, or, I mean, we talked about this previously with some other applications as well, or if this at least might need to be re-noticed in terms, and re-notification fees or something, depending on how long it goes out. And, I'm not sure if anybody has any thought on that. Like, if we get it next month, like, is that okay, and we can just keep going forward, even though the abutters got noticed a while ago at this point? Any?
I do have one thing. So, this was not accepted as complete because of, it didn't include a drainage study, plan in wetlands. I wasn't here for that meeting.
Okay.
And I don't really recall what, what else, do you remember what else was missing on that?
Just the drainage.
And my question is leading to, we just approved, well, we accepted the application from the one on Beach Hill Road, and there were several items missing, and we accepted that. There was an erosion control plan, there was storm water to SWIP, there were several items missing, but we still chose to accept that as complete.
So we had a discussion about this.
Okay, and I, I just would like clarification on that.
And the applicant for, the one you're mentioning just now, the, when they were just talking about, which didn't have that as well.
The beach one?
Yeah, no, the, no, the Beach Hill.
Beach Hill water, yeah.
Assured us that that information would be coming in very quickly, in a timely manner, and?
And he followed through with it.
And, because we also, like, warned that, you know, once we accept this, the clock starts ticking.
Right.
And, in terms of the deadlines. And, so they assured us that, no, in fact, we can, like, get all this information to you very quickly, and so we've gotten that information now.
So, the one for?
Whereas, the other one, they could not get it that fast.
Right, he, he said he would need some time.
So he chose to wait.
He said he would need some time to get it done.
And we all agreed that we didn't want to start the clock ticking with?
No, I understood, I just wanted clarification on that, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, are we all comfortable, well, it's not really continuing it, but putting this off another month, given the notifications and all that?
I am.
I am.
Honestly, you know, I, I think the applicant has, I, first of all, I don't recall a lot of attendance that night where abutters were concerned about it, but, you know, I don't always remember that, those details. But, but I, I don't, you know, the other thing is that we do notice the public of our meetings, and we post our agendas publicly, so if somebody wants to comment on an application that they've been noticed on, you know, there, there are other forms of public notice that do go out. So I don't, I don't feel horribly about continuing this application. In, in my experience, this was kind of normal that you, my, in, in my practice, I would, I would, I'm used to kind of continuing application hearings even if you haven't accepted the application yet, so I'm okay with this.
I am, I definitely am.
Okay, in, in this case, I'm okay with it.
Yep.
There is a, a point in time for me at least, where we haven't re-noticed people, that I would become uncomfortable, I don't think we've gotten there yet.
In regards to that, I've been thinking that, you know, we do continuations quite often, and one of the frequent things in our conversation is re-noticing. And aside from this, may, you know, maybe we should, in the future, can see if we should set some guidelines, because we're, we sort of use ambiguous, like, how we're feeling, right? But maybe for the noticing aspect, because we frequently do it a lot, and a lot of our topic of conversation is often?
I don't know if we've done it a lot, we did it with the one on Yettin Road.
Right, I shouldn't say a lot, but it's, it's semi-frequent occurrence.
Yeah.
Where we're throwing it around, and maybe, I don't know if it's possible if that's what we would want to set a standard, just for the noticing aspect, that, hey, if we do continue this far, you know, it's written and it's clearly outlined that re-noticing and the fees are on the application and not, you know, burden on the town or the taxpayers.
I think not making a deci, sorry. I think not making a decision is, is kind of the same as continuing it, because otherwise, I think we'd be in the boat of, you know, if, if we felt like, I, I think to go to an extreme, I think it would be wrong of us to require that an applicant submit a new application for each meeting if we decide the previous one wasn't complete.
Oh, correct.
Right, because they'd have to pay the fees, and notice the abutters each meeting, right? That, 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 that's not a good service. That's not a service to our applicants or our residents.
No, you're, you're.
I think it shows that we're working with.
Yeah, I agree.
And so for the sake of brevity, it sounds like we're all comfortable?
Continuing.
Continue, like?
Continuing.
Which is, yes, okay.
Yep.
So, we'll revisit this in our November business meeting, and we'll see where we are.
Yeah, all right.
So, up next, site plan review application, 113 Beach Hill Road. Continuation of a public hearing on an application from Brandon Hiltz on behalf of BH Holding LLC for a site plan review approval to construct an approximately 5,000 square foot five bay garage for heavy duty truck and equipment repair, along with an approximately 1,200 square foot office. A large gravel parking area will be created, and the garage will be accessed via an existing gravel driveway. And, for many of us, we just came from the site, I'm from a site visit at 5:30, and, and so now we're, I'm returning to this, so it would be good to discuss a little bit what we've learned, and maybe hear from the applicant again, if there's anything to expand upon there, and after we have a little bit of preliminary discussion, then we can reopen the public hearing as well, and hear from the public, as well as read letters and other such things. So are there any thoughts, actually, before we hear any thoughts from the board, are there any comments that the applicant, or any, anybody representing the applicant would like to make? No? Not at this point? Okay. So members of the board, do we have any thoughts or questions at this point? I have the notes I'm, I'm looking for, I scribbled down.
You're, you're asking for comments from, from the board at this point?
Yes.
I am, we're not doing a public hearing yet.
No, I would like to note that, you know, in the package that we were provided, there is a storm water plan, there's a, an approved septic plan, there's an updated site plan showing the location of the septic relative to the building. So, you know, there is a significant amount of information that we did not have previously when we were considering this application. I, I think it was of, of great value to me personally to be able to walk the site. I, I would like to thank the applicant for his ability to host us and allow us to see this. I think it makes, makes it easier for us to understand what and where things are going to be relative to, you know, the off-site impacts, so I, I feel much more comfortable with what's being proposed at this point, in terms of understanding spatial orientation of everything.
I mean, I, I'm speaking a bit extemporaneously here. There were a bunch of things we saw when we visited the site, and, I'm just kind of trying to process some of them myself at this point. So we did see some things that I wasn't expecting to see necessarily, and we did see lots of vehicles. We saw some piles of materials that we were told were from highway and culvert digging. We saw some other piles of materials as well, that had some questions that I, about use of the space, and whether or not those piles of materials are related to automobile repair and sales. And, so those are some things I saw. I also had questions in my mind about where those vehicles were parked. Often, looking at a site plan, we look at parking issues, where parking is located, how much parking, and such and such. I did look up in our zoning ordinance, automobile sales and repairs, and, or, where is that? Auto service stations, actually, is it, is it auto service station that we're under, or?
I think vehicular sales and repair was what the applicant stated last time.
Which is different than, I was, I was looking at auto service station, actually, but we're actually doing vehicular, vehicular sales and repair. It's, it was, this is another issue that has come up in some of the letters and other things, that it was not determined in the application itself, but in our conversation last time, I guess I, I misremembered, it was vehicular sales and repair, it's not auto service station.
I believe that's what the applicant stated it would be.
Yeah, so regardless, it is, I think, often when we look at a site plan, we do look at parking, and what counts as parking or not on a site, and we can talk about whether or not we want to look at that in this particular case. And I apologize, that was not exactly a well-ordered statement on my part, but just a bunch of things I noticed in our site visits that I haven't fully put together yet.
That was helpful. Thank you. Should we have a third-party engineer review?
Typically, we do.
And stuff? Do we do that once we accept the application?
Well, but this application already is accepted, yeah.
We did, we did, I'm bad, sorry. Excuse me. Is it generally thought that it'd be better practice to have specific parking areas for the vehicles that we saw on the site? Is that?
I mean, I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
For most site plans, we have a parking area.
Yeah.
And, I don't know how the board feels about this, but that is typically part of a site plan review. And it involves questions of the use of the site, and some of the questions we had at the site plan, at the site visit. Mike?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, normally when we get a parking plan, it would involve, not necessarily less acres, but it would involve the public parking, and the public walking, and I'm not sure a parking area or plan might be as necessary on a 70-acre lot that's mainly for your own business without the public showing up.
I guess my concern is, I think one of the benefits you might get from specifying a parking area, is it also delimits just how many vehicles we're gonna end up with on the site. And I, I, I hear some concerns about the number of vehicles we saw today, and we don't even have a business there yet. And, if you, if you have a, a site plan with a parking area, that means that's where the parking is, and if it's not there, if it's somewhere else, it's not really following the site plan then. So, I mean, it's a way of thinking about the size and scope of this business, is thinking about the parking that we might delimit for it in a site plan. I guess that's, that's, that's where I'm coming at this. I'm willing to listen, obviously, to other voices, though.
If he just owned the property, and he didn't, wasn't planning on building a building, but he had this stuff and he parked it, it's in the agricultural zone, what would that be?
That's where I'm questioning too.
I mean, he owns?
So, non-residential use, I mean, it's not a residential use. I mean, I, I think you'd have a hard time making the case that this is a residential use, and?
But it's, it's agriculturally zoned, and he owns the property, and he's got all these vehicles, and he parks on there. Is this a permitted use in that zone? If he did not come in for a site plan review, and he wasn't gonna put a building there?
And that's sort of one way I'm looking at it, just trying to think multiple ways is, so?
But he is coming in for a commercial.
But he's applied for a heavy duty truck and equipment repair facility. And, and I'm just trying to look at this from multiple angles. What would it look like if those trucks actually had no affiliation with his facility, because that facility is for repair, and?
He's got a different business for that.
Right, and maybe those trucks are affiliated with another company the gentleman runs. And, and I'm just trying to think of, just trying to?
It started, it's, it's, if you have that many vehicles, it's starting to look like some kind of commercial use.
Industrial use.
Yeah.
But?
I understand.
Maybe he's a collector of stuff, and, I mean, that happens a lot, drive around the agricultural zone, and you will see that.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do.
So I just, and I?
I mean, if, I mean, here's the thing, if they're not for a commercial use for sale, and as we saw, some of these are unregistered vehicles, you can have an unregistered vehicle for sale. If they're not for sale, then it becomes a junkyard.
Well, you could also have an unregistered vehicle for commercial use, because rock trucks don't get registered. You know, trucks that someone's transporting from a commercial storage site.
Even an excavator, right? It's not road?
Oh, yeah.
Anything that's not roadworthy.
Yeah.
But I, I think that that's where you get into industrial use.
Switch over to that line.
However, that's not the application.
Right, right, right.
Like, I, I actually think, you know, if we focus on, well, I, actually, I was reviewing the application, and it's, you know, we, we've discussed automotive service and repair, but I, you know, it's not clear to me that that's what the application is for. And I think that it would behoove?
Can you explain?
Everyone involved to clarify the intent of the application.
I was looking at page 25 of our packet from the month of the application.
Yep.
And just to summarize it, I was going off the five bay garage for heavy duty truck and equipment repair, in the summary, fair ref.
Mm-hmm. Is that in the packet?
That was in the packet, yep.
So that, I, I believe that's?
Page 919.
And I believe that's also in the current package.
Okay.
Somewhere.
I'm missing a page. Because I was, I was looking for it, I mean?
Yeah, I believe that's the staff report.
Oh, the staff report, yeah, okay.
Has that, some of that language in it.
So do we have more than one business out there, I guess, is, we've got the shop, this five bay, that we're doing the site plan review on? We've got the shop, this five-bay, that we're doing the site plan review on, and then we've got equipment. Is that another business? Is it two businesses? Well, I guess I'm, we got some gray areas here.
Would the applicant like to help clarify some of these questions? If you would, please come up to the mic.
What was the question about?
Oh, there seems to be some concern on the board about use, whether, we talked last, the application doesn't really give a specific use, and so we tried to nail this down last time, since for a site plan, we need a specific use. And we talked about vehicular sales and repair, and there seems to be some concern that we might be looking at something different or more or than vehicular sales and repair.
Because of the excavator and bulldozer?
No, I think what the question is, is you've got the site plan review for this building that you want to put in, that you're saying is going to be a repair shop. And then, when we did the site walk today, they noticed a lot of vehicles out there, and it was noted that you buy and sell them, and you do whatever, you rehab them or whatever. And that appears to be a different business.
That's part of the same business. That's the repair, equipment and truck repair. I mean, that's what we do with those.
Vehicular sales and repair.
Right.
There are also piles of other materials on the space, like culverts and-
There's some, yes.
Which would not necessarily be vehicular sales and repair.
I think we just need to know what's going to be out there. What's, what is that? What's going to be there?
I share the concern that it appears like what's happening there is beyond vehicular sales and into industrial use, based on what is there now. And I think my comment earlier about clarifying all of the uses is partly to protect you as the applicant and ensure that what gets approved is, you know, that you can continue to operate as you intend. But it also, you know, if it's a, if it's an industrial use of, you know, heavy equipment storage, you know, material and equipment storage for site excavation, you know, I think that would fall into the industrial use that requires a special exception, which is now, requires a trip to the ZBA to obtain a special exception.
Also, to clarify, I mean, at our last meeting, we heard from members of the public and some of the butters, I believe, about dump trucks and lid stores slapping.
Operating.
And that might happen, that might happen in the course of repair. But it's more likely to happen in the course of others, you know, other uses.
I would argue that moving material on and off of a site is not vehicular service and repair.
Well, no, I mean, you might be fixing that part of the truck, but-
True.
More likely, it may have involved materials being moved, which might not be related to vehicular sales and repair. I think we've heard that from the public, that those sorts of concerns, and this is what we're trying to clarify.
I could surmise the slapping of those tailgates three weeks ago were our own trucks putting that material in the ditch.
Giving the town trucks.
I would have, I would have very little concern about hearing an application. If this application is exclusively for vehicular sales and repair, then that gets approved with a very limited scope of-
Use of the land.
Uses, and other uses then become non-conforming, which I don't think serves anybody well. Doesn't serve you well, doesn't serve the neighbors well.
Well, it serves well as long as that's all that's happening, as long as other uses don't happen.
Well, I'm concerned about the non-conforming uses that are not on the site plan.
No, I'm saying as long as they don't happen.
Yeah. But if they do happen, that becomes an issue for, so we are not an enforcement body. The selectmen have sole authority for enforcement or their agent, so, but they also have, you know, the ability to impose fines and cease and desist orders and everything else. So, you know, I think it serves everyone here for the proposed uses to be well-defined and have us have a public hearing with the public able to comment on that before we consider that.
So, vehicular sales and repair is vehicular repair in that shop and some sales as well, and you talked about that at our site visit. Anything that involves commercial use and industrial use of moving materials and other sorts of equipment around would not be part of that use.
I would make the same, I think the same argument could be made, that, you know, storage of culverts and reprocessed concrete or-
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, other material, like, that's, in my mind, that goes beyond the vehicular sales. But if that's part of your goal, I think the site plan should show that as, you know, material storage or equipment storage.
So, are, I guess the question is, oh, Mike?
So, I'm trying to wrap my head around the uses, and I look at it, that we're trying to find, we're trying to find a label for what he's doing there. And I think we're getting wrapped up in the label where most people that lived in Plymouth did a few different things to survive. There wasn't just one thing, that you had farmers that were good at welding, you had farmers that could repair equipment, tractors. They would sell their products on the side of the road. I think we're getting really hung up on a label, and I think it sounds like, and I can hear from what he said the last meeting, it's going to be a few different things. He's going to run his construction business out of there. But we don't have a label for that, I guess. He's going to repair equipment. Most construction people do repair their equipment and repair others as side income because when a homeowner has a driveway they want to put in or a septic system, they call someone like Brandon to install their septic system or their foundation hole or, and it doesn't fit in the agri, it doesn't fit in the commercial industrial zone because no one would want to go and have, hire him if he's got to pay the taxes out on Tenney Mountain Highway to house all of his equipment. So, I'm still trying to wrap my head around where would it fit?
So, I, to answer part of this question, I think the reason we're getting hung up on putting a label on this use is, one of the purposes of our zoning is to prevent, as well as possible, contiguous uses that might contradict one another and come in conflict with one another. And we have residential uses there. And residential uses near vehicular sales and repair is not really a big deal. Residential uses next to larger-scale industrial or commercial uses does start to become a bigger deal because of sound and various other issues. And this is why we have the zoning ordinance, and this is why some of those other uses require a special exception. And because then we can actually, or we, the zoning board can actually look at some of those conflicts between the uses that we as a planning board really have said, that's, who does that? And so, this is where putting a label on it really is important, because this is, these labels define which use it is and then how we treat that use, and whether or not it's a special exception that has to actually take some further parameters into account before it's allowed, and for, I think, for good reasons. And that's why we're trying to put a label on it.
So, let's look at what is permitted in the ag-
I mean, you yourself were saying, some of these uses that you were describing that he might be doing are not vehicular sales and repair and might actually require a special exception to be next to residential uses. Or, I mean, to be in that zone in general and might raise issues with residential uses next door.
Do we have a sheet on what's allowed in the ag zone?
The table of use?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a printout of the table of uses. I can screen share it if people would like that, but screen.
You could screen share it, that'd be helpful, please.
Junkyard would be special exception, the lumberyard would be a special exception.
You zoom in. Thank you.
I'll be not going to be running a sexual business.
Which, which-
A truck terminal, a truck terminal would be a special exception, a warehouse, a wholesale business is special exception.
Third column, okay, thank you.
Industrial is special exception. So, there are a bunch here, like truck terminal, warehouse, wholesale, industry, that are all special exception, junkyard special exception.
Wholesale business.
Yeah.
Vehicular sales and repair is permitted, according to the table.
Yeah. And this is why defining the use really is important, because we're talking about permitted versus special exceptions. And there's a reason we distinguish them.
My concern is that, you know, if we consider this application as vehicular sales and service and repair, then all the other uses are not allowed because there's no special exception for those. Whereas if you put those on a site plan and we review it, and you go to the zoning board to get a special exception, then the other uses, you know, presumably the ZBA would have the input of the public, and they could, they could make a determination on issuing the special exception for the other uses. That's my concern.
Isn't that something you could add if you're going to use the land for something else later?
So- You could come in with a new site plan and a, and a ZBA approval for a special exception for it, and that could be done later.
You can expand, I mean, that's always an option, right?
Change use, but it requires-
Or additional use or however you-
Or additional use. But that also requires a review of the site plan, and it would require a special exception. And you would have to comply with zoning at that time, and like, not that, we are considering zoning changes that might affect that property at this time, too, not because of this application, just because it's been something we've been working on for a long time. So, you know, there is, there is potential that the zoning changes that we're proposing this year might affect your ability, some of the uses may become, might require variance instead of a special exception, which is a harder lift.
I guess the question is, if you're truly comfortable with going for vehicular sales and repair, we can go forward like that. But it just means those, any of those other uses are, you know, at least for now, for this site plan and approval, off the table. Mike?
So, I saw a few things that are permitted, but one thing that would be a special exception is industry. And I would love to have kind of a definition of that, so I know.
Yeah, so, industry is, let me pull that up for you.
Define it zoning?
Yeah, it is, just one second.
Can you share that on the screen when you pull it up?
Sure, yep, absolutely.
So, that's the one thing I can see a hang-up on, whereas vehicular sales and repair is good, office, he's going to have his good commercial service, he's doing a commercial business, and an auto service station, which is permitted also. Nothing else I can see really pertained, it's not retail.
So, page, so in Joseph's report to us, page five of six, that also includes this industry definition, as well as vehicular sales and repair and junkyard?
So, yeah, it's, "The assembly, manufacture, processing, packaging, or other operations to goods or materials, home occupations are excluded." So, that's how the zoning ordinance-
So, processing of materials would be industry.
Special description in ag zone.
Yeah.
Assembly, manufacturer, processing.
This is what we were talking about- Even if it's materials.
This is what we were talking about at the site visit with, you know, we saw some piles of stuff, and it doesn't rise to that level, but if more starts to accumulate and go in and out, then it becomes that.
It's also in the engineer's plans, the description of safe storage, I believe.
Can you clarify that?
Yeah, if, once I pull out the paper. Papers that we had on the site that I don't have with me right now.
In the report?
There are a couple of larger copies up on the table there, too.
So, the equipment that he has there would fall under that, too, because it's, he does repair, and on those- "In display for sale of more than two or more of any type of trailer, provided the trailers are occupied, or where repair or bodywork are performed on motor vehicles or trailers, including auto service stations. Vehicle sales include motor vehicle retailer." So, they would-
So, Sue, here's my observation, like, the vehicular sales and repair refers to road-going, road-going vehicles, right, and trailers, things that are registered? So, what do you, what about, you know, I would think that-
I see, I know what you're saying.
You know, there's, there was a-
A registerable.
A pavement milling machine, there's an excavator, there's, you know, other equipment that-
Right.
Would not fall under, what I wouldn't consider vehicular sales.
But I'm just referring to the other things that he's doing, but you're right, the crusher and that stuff that's there. I guess if it was all disclosed, if everything was disclosed in the original site plan application, this discussion wouldn't be happening. But I think because there were other items that were there, the culverts, the Jersey barriers, the stuff like that that's there, I think that's what's bringing up the other. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess I didn't realize that was a, I mean, if you have culvert pipe, where do you put it when you have it? I mean, what's, I didn't see that as a thing that was a planning board issue.
Well, I think it's just because it's another use. I mean, you wouldn't be using that in your vehicle repair.
No.
In sales. And so, I think that's why, and now that it's been, we see that, and it's just a different use, and really, it's protecting you as much as it is-
Oh, I understand.
The neighbors and the town and everyone else. So, I think if it had been included originally, it wouldn't be a discussion.
And that's my point. I think that, you know, the applicant, if you wanted to fully define all of the, you know, the scopes of work that you would plan to use on that property, so that it's well-defined as part of the site plan, then it gives us something to have a hearing on, it gives the ZBA something to have a special exception on if it, if we consider it to be an industrial use. And then, if it's approved, it also protects you in those uses into the future, right? So, but it also, you know, I think the hard part is, you know, what I see is that if we approve this for vehicular sales and repair, down the road, somebody complains that you're hauling material in and out of there, and that's an industrial use, then that becomes an enforcement issue and it becomes problematic for you.
So, here's the thing, like, if you just have a few culverts there and, like, not much happens and probably won't be an issue, if they start going on and off the property on a regular basis, it starts to look like another use. It becomes another use.
That industrial use.
Yeah. So, if you're just dumping in there for a while and whatever, but if it, if it moves back and forth-
They don't move, I mean, we don't typically stock pipe, we just happen to have a-
Leftover from a job or something.
Yeah. It'll leave one more time and then it'll be done. That's all that is.
But, I mean-
I understand.
There's going to be something like that on every job, though, right? There's going to be material that comes in off some jobs.
Hopefully not, there's an excessive amount right now.
Well, I mean, when you say, like, when you say that, so, I mean, are you running another business besides vehicular sales and repair out of that property?
I don't, we're storing some materials, yes. I didn't, I guess I didn't realize, is that not allowed on an agricultural land to store or is that, I mean, that seems like fairly-
Again, it's a matter of, if there's a large turnover of those materials, it starts to look like another use, as opposed to just a few things, like, stored there for a while because you have them. And then, we're talking about something that's not vehicular sales and repair.
And despite the name of the agricultural zone, there are still limitations on, it can't be done there, I guess. I'm familiar with.
Mike?
If anything, what this shows is that the folks that wrote the zoning for Plymouth knew what they were doing. And as much as everybody says the ag zone is, isn't anything goes, this just shows that there are protections, good protections for what you can and can't do. And it, it shows some foresight by past planning boards that they knew what they were doing. But I do, Joseph, can you, because this is a real sticking point, is what is industry? And can you put that back up, that definition? I'd love to-
In your packet.
In your packet. On page five, it sits on the site.
Where this is on the back page.
Oh, you have my.
Staff report? Do you need that?
That's, that's okay.
Will we be able to hear from the public soon? I don't want it to get late and have people.
No, I know, I, I agree. It just seems like we, I went under, at least some resolution to this, I mean, I'm not sure we're really going to totally, but.
I'm still not sure that we have clearly defined what, what we're, what the application we're hearing.
Well, we, we, I'm not sure we have that either, but, um, I also do wanna hear from the public, and I agree with Sue.
Yeah.
But, so, do you have your definition, Mike?
I do, I'm trying to figure out how that fits this business, and, um, it's.
Materials can include earth and gravel, and all that kinda stuff, and the processing of it, and all of that would be industry.
Right, and I'm not sure, um, packaging or other operations to goods or materials, and I'm not sure if that's a main part of his business, or it's incidental, he comes back and there's extra materials that he has to drop off, because he's gotta go back to the, the site to work on something else, and he just can't leave it on the side of the road. I just.
That, that, that means he's running another business out of that site besides.
Vehicular use.
Vehicular sales and repair.
Yeah.
I think with.
The question is, what would that be?
What would it be?
We, we don't have any.
If the crusher's going, you know, eight months out of the year, industry, no qualms about it.
I think the crusher starts once in a year.
Bad example for eight months. Sure, if, right, if you're crushing out there, that's processing material.
That's, that's obnoxious, that is clearly addressed in the zoning ordinance.
Well, that's, but what if, yeah, no, that's a good question, like, what if dropping off.
And I've got.
Extra material, I don't know what that falls on.
Why would you drop it off at a vehicular sales and repair shop, unless it's more than that?
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it is vehicular sales or repair.
About what is the use?
I'm saying, like, yeah, exactly, yeah, I'm saying, you know, you have, you know, thousand yard, thousand tons, or a thousand yards, whatever, for a job, and you end up with thirty extra, right? Like, so you're like, all right, well, I have this site that I bring it to.
Mm-hmm.
What, I don't know the answer to, what is that use?
Can, can we ask the applicant, like, so here, here's my question to you, do you want us to proceed with this exclusively as a vehicular sales and repair site plan, or do you want to expand to include other general site, site construction and storage uses as well?
And we're, in part, asking that because the application itself doesn't really specify.
To do anything else, other than put the building in, is gonna require more site work. There's not, it's gonna require more grading, more, it's gonna require.
But it can be.
More.
An approval.
Right.
Well, I mean, the, but the building permit process, if you're not putting up a structure, there's no permit required unless you're disturbing enough to trigger.
There will be if you trigger other permits.
Right, but, I mean, you could, you could move material and then just set it where it is without make any alteration, right? And, and you could use up that whole space, and, and I would agree, argue that that's a significant impact, it's not vehicular sales and maintenance. Um, I, I guess my question to you is, do you want the, do you wanna be able to use that for storage of materials and construction equipment?
Then, eventually, yes, but there, there's gonna be more, there'll be another whole plan that I would have to do if I'm gonna do anything like that.
So, so you sound okay with going forward with this site plan as just vehicular sales and repair, and so if anything happens after this site plan is approved, if it's approved, um, before another one is approved, that would not be a acceptable use of that land? An approved use.
Mike?
So it'd be the same as it currently is? Not changing anything by starting the building, right? It's not gonna be any different tomorrow if you guys approve the building permit.
If we, if we, if we approve the site plan for vehicular sales and repair.
Yep.
That is what you're approved to do, and any of these other uses that we're talking about, you are not approved to do. And they are, will not be allowed there.
So.
Unless you have a new site plan.
Question, though.
And the selectmen may enforce to require you to remove the other materials and stop storing things there.
So, there's seventy-six acres there, right? So if I'm, my site plan is not even a full acre, so that means that the rest of the land could only be used for vehicular sales and maintenance? Cause there's still currently residents on the property.
You can have another site plan for another part of this plot.
So that doesn't, I don't think that means that the rest of the property has to be the same.
But those are business uses on the same parcel, and.
That got really.
That was my original question.
So, one other thing to add is, vehicle repair means the, I'm not sure where I'm getting this from, but rebuilding, reconditioning of motor vehicles, mobile homes, or farm implements, including collision service, painting, steam cleaning of vehicles.
Is that in our, is that in our zoning?
No.
Okay, then that. So what's in our zoning?
What do we have for vehicle repair in our zoning?
Storage and display for sale of more than two motor vehicles, or any type of trailer, provided the trailer is unoccupied, or the repair or bodywork are performed on motor vehicles or trailers, including auto service stations. Vehicular sales include motor vehicle retail or wholesale, that's in there.
It's two paragraphs above industry.
So it does not include, um, non-registerable heavy equipment, um.
So, what I, this seems like it right now is, right now, you're storing things, you're storing things there, and it's flying, it's in a nebulous zone, flying under the radar of attracting any other nuisance, because it's, you know, hasn't attracted much nuisance from other uses. Because of this application for a vehicle, you know, for possibly a vehicle sales and repair, you're now opening yourself up to an interpretation of what you're using the property for.
Well, there have been some other concerns from the public already about noise and.
Okay, even, even without, even if there was no site plan for the vehicular sales, like, the, the commercial use of that parcel without a site plan is, is problematic. So e- even if you wanna continue what you're doing there now, it requires a site plan. So, you know, the, the option is get everything out of there, or file a site plan, in my, in my perspective, and, unless I'm.
I'm, I, I mean, ultimately, that's not up to the.
Ultimately, it's not up to us to enforce that.
Um, I, I see where you're coming from, and I can probably agree with that, but really not, not up to this board to decide that.
And, and it's, right, I mean, it, but it's up to, it's up to the select board to interpret the zoning ordinance and enforce it.
Yes.
And, and any citizen could complain to the, to the select board and ask for enforcement.
Yeah.
I'm going to suggest that you expand your site plan to include those uses, and we might have to kick it out to the ZBA for a special exception, but.
Unless you just wanna go forward with this, but.
Okay.
But, I mean, it, I mean, it's up to you, it's not up to us.
I, I.
There's no reason I can't come in with a site plan next month.
No, you're right.
And have the building started, and be using it for repairs and maintenance, right?
Okay.
Joseph, can you go over what the.
That doesn't limit me, sorry.
No, please go ahead.
That doesn't limit me, is my question.
If this gets approved, it doesn't limit you to your building.
Right.
That's what he's asking.
Okay.
Do you have a, is there a question for Joseph?
Joseph, what if, say if you were to come back with a site plan for many different uses, or more uses, or a use that requires a special exception, what criteria would he be looking to meet to fulfill the requirements of a special exception?
So, yeah, if, I guess there would be two separate possibilities, you could come back with a site plan review that's amending a prior site plan review, or expanding a prior site plan review, and depending on the uses included in that expansion or amendment, it may not require a special exception, or it might. If it did, they would, there would need to be an approval from the zoning board, uh, which would be them reviewing the application, holding a public hearing, um, and they would review the six special exception criteria, which look at things like character of the neighborhood, um, no adverse effect on public, uh, you know, vehicles or pedestrians. It, it looks at sort of those public protection criteria. So if it's a use specifically categorized as requiring special exception, um, theoretically, um, you know, you can apply to the planning board for something that, you know, if, if you say, I would like to do a use that requires a special exception on my site plan, the board could still look at that and say, our approval is contingent on you getting this special exception, but, um, you know, there's two ways, it depends on if any of the uses in the amended site plan, because if there's uses in the amended site plan that are just already permitted, um, then it would be more of a, just a normal site plan review. If that answers your question.
It does. If the, so there's six requirements to meet for a special exception, and I won't get to this in my last question, but on this one. Um, are those in the town, in our town ordinances and dialogues and such?
Yep.
Are those six criteria same across everything? Like, a special exception, these are the six criteria.
Yep, that's a good question. Uh, so, there are the six standard criteria, and then there are additional criteria for specific uses, so some particular uses have an additional criteria beyond those six, but it depends on the use. So industry actually does have a different, any special exception needs to meet the default six.
Yep.
Some need to meet, you know, a specific list of extra criteria that's spelt out further down in the special exception section of the zoning ordinance, so.
And industry has that.
Industry does, that's a good point.
And this is all outlined in the zoning order.
Yep, that's correct, Article twelve.
Article twelve, all right. Thank you.
And Mike?
I, um, I look at our town zoning again, and I, there was, was some forward thinking, and it kinda helps us with our decision a little bit today. Um, one thing that is a special exception is a lumberyard, and I believe they made that a special exception for protections for homeowners, because very few of us want to have our home right next to a lumberyard, where the buzz and the cutting is going on non-stop, and you hear it maybe even miles away. So I get why that needs to be a special exception, and I'm wondering whether industry, um, is required to be a special exception because of the amount of noise going on in the con, processing, packaging, that could be very loud and obnoxious to the neighbors. And obviously, he's not proposing this in a residential zone, cause there's no chance of it, obviously. Um, but where the residential, residential comes to the ag zone, there, it, there is, um, protections in the zoning that would require special exceptions. I think we are going down the right road as far as, um, our discussion, and I am looking forward to hearing the public speak.
I would just wanna mention one thing before we, um, open a public hearing, and I might start the public hearing by reading the letter that was, um, submitted. Um.
Thank you.
If you could just clarify, Joseph, I believe, um, there's been some input about, um, just to clarify our last meeting's, a discussion about the driveway permit.
Oh, yes, and that is in the staff report, too, thank you for, for mentioning that. So the, the highway department, uh, did mention, there are two, two comments that they raised, uh, one being, uh, question about, uh, potential concern over increased wear and tear on, um, concerns are extra weight and traffic of the big trucks on the road making it deteriorate more quickly, and the driveway needs to be at least two vehicles in width in order to move traffic along Beach Hill Road, so as not to have traffic waiting for a vehicle coming in or out of the entrance. We do not want to impede traffic flow on the road. So those were passed along by the highway department, um, as comments.
Thank you.
All right, so. Can I read something from our, um, zone objectives and land use controls?
Okay.
That might help us understand, put this in context. So, um, talking about the, the table that we're looking at, um, the, the land use table, um, and, and zones, um, and any use designed as a permitted use may be commenced in a particular zone, providing the standards established by this ordinance are met. Unless a variance, special exception, or action, or an appeal from an administration is required, the necessary permit may issued by the selectman or their designee. Any use designated as a special exception may be commenced in the particular district only after approval by the Board of Adjust, Board of Adjustment, ZBA. If a specific use is not listed, then it is not allowed, unless the planning board finds that the use is sufficiently similar to an enumerated, permitted, or special exception use. General provisions pertaining to all zones are prescribed in Article four, in the event of any conflict between these restrictions contained in Article seven, floodplain development, and airport restrictions, the more restrictive may apply. What I'm trying to get at is that any, any use that's not specifically enumerated is kind of up to us in the site plan.
Well, no, any, anything that's not specifically enumerated, this is a permissive, um, legal framework.
Right.
Which means if we don't explicitly permit it, it is not permitted.
Right, and in order to permit it, it has to closely suit a permitted use.
Right.
Or closely come to it.
But we still require site, site.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phil.
Oh, you're, go ahead.
The only use that the applicant is coming forward to today is vehi, vehi, vehicular sales and repair, which, according to the town definition, is two or more vehicles. And to exclude homeowner, um, repair, which I don't think he's asking to be, um, considered. So I think we're, and that, that is the only use, correct?
Yeah. As long as you stay within that, and.
We can.
As you're developing the land, you don't go beyond that. Um, and it was only raised because it looks like you could very easily, at this point, already be going beyond that maybe even. Um, as long as you stay within that, then we're good. Um, so I'm gonna open the public hearing, um, it's seven forty, and I will officially, um, continue our public hearing. And I will start by reading this letter from Robert and Crystal Skinner. Uh, Plymouth Planning Board members, as residents of Plymouth for forty-six years, spending forty-two years in the Plymouth Single Family Zone at Fort Wentworth Street, and currently four years at seventeen Brookside Drive in Plymouth Agricultural Zone, it appears the area on Beach Hill Road between Fairgrounds Road and Brandon Hilt's property at one thirteen Beach Hill Road is very much another single-family zone. Within the agricultural zone, there are sixty-five single-family residences in this location, including those homes on Beach Hill Road, Carpenter Park, Pine Gate Village, and Brookside Drive. Allowing a commercial truck repair business in this area will go against the Town of Plymouth zoning regulation under general provision, section four oh seven. On page twenty-two, which states, uh, section four oh seven, general nuisance, no person shall allow, cause to be allowed, nor permit any use of land within the boundaries of the Town of Plymouth to be used in any manner that would be considered noxious use of said land. The legal definition of noxious is harmful or injurious, generally with regards to human health or the environment. Criminal and civil statutes may prohibit the use of possession, or possession of noxious substances or materials. It is our belief, allowing a commercial truck repair business, excuse me, in this area of the agricultural zone, would violate section four oh seven for the following reasons. The vibrations of commercial vehicles driving on Beach Hill Road, the noise from the pneumatic drills and other tools necessary to repair vehicles, the need for outdoor lighting, which would interfere with local residences, the possibility of pollution into the brook behind the residences on Brookside Drive from oil, diesel, fuel, malfunction of pneumatic drills, the danger of trucks hitting pedestrians as they are walking on Beach Hill Road, as there are no sidewalks, the danger at, to schoolchildren who need to walk on Beach Hill Road to wait for the school bus to arrive, for pickup in the morning and drop off in the afternoon, the danger to the elderly who are walking in the road on Beach Hill, the danger on not enough room for two vehicles to pass one another at the same time on Beach Hill Road, the class of vehicles which will be driving on Beach Hill Road, and the lack of turning radius to enter the property, the lack of necessary room for two vehicles to pass one another at the Fairgrounds Road intersection with Beach Hill Road, including two vehicles turning both onto and leaving Beach Hill, both when turning right or left, as there is an island with a telephone pole. The thirty-five mile, mile per hour currently posted at the Plymouth entrance of Beach Hill Road is currently dangerous to walkers on the road. With the addition of class one to eight commercial vehicles, the road becomes much more dangerous within this residential area. Additionally, as residents, we enjoy the local wildlife, we are concerned the wildlife will not be frequenting our neighborhood, as often with the truck repair business so close. The brook is a natural area where beer, beer, there, turkeys, opossum, gray foxes, bobcats, fisher cats, skunks, raccoons, rabbits, and an eastern wolf have been seen on our game camera in the back of our yard within the last four years we have resided here. All the residents in this area have enjoyed the peace and quiet within this residential area of the agricultural zone. We do not want to put up with noise, odor, and vibration, which will be caused by allowing a commercial truck repair business to be located at one thirteen Beach, Beach Hill Road. Please think long and hard on ramifications of allowing a commercial business within the location of the agricultural zone. Thanks for taking the time to understand why we, as residents, are not in favor of allowing this application to be approved. Sincerely, Crystal Skinner and Robert Skinner. Before we, um, open up, we also received from other letters, um, of concern about wildlife, noise, potential grinder activity. Um, we received a letter, um, referring to, um, Mr. Hilt's activities in, um, neighboring towns, including Ashland, um, which, and some of the difficulties there, um, and, which I'm not gonna go into all detail on here, um. Which I'm not going to go into all detail on here. Anything else to... Before we open it up. I think that's what we have right now. If members of the public would like to come up and to the mic and address the board with questions or concerns, please come up to the mic and state your name and your questions or concerns.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Elaine Belkus from Beach Hill Road. I concur with the Skinner's letter as far as everything that they mentioned and the ramifications it would have in our neighborhood. We're 100% density. It's... There's no extra lots down there. There's 65 homes. You have two mobile home parks, one small subdivision in Beach Hill. And like I said, there's no empty lots. It's 65 houses right there. Chairman Chris, I believe you stated at the last meeting that it's the board's role to make it safe and harmonious as well as neighborhood impacts. And my question to the board is, I'm not sure how this particular commercial enterprise is safe and harmonious to this area. There's a daycare at 48 Beach Hill Road, which is right across the street from me, the big white farmhouse. Like I said, there's two mobile home parks with many retirees who walk daily, the small subdivision. And I just want to reiterate that the noise and the vibration, possible emission of fumes, dust, that will most likely be created from this enterprise. So, I am very much opposed to it. It appears... I used to walk that land all the time. I knew the Avery's very well, the women that owned it. So, I'd snowshoe and winter walk and hike it in the summertime. The culvert that's there right now is new. That black metal covered culvert. I did call New Hampshire Wetlands Board to see if there was a permit for that culvert, and she has no record of it. So, that was put in sometime within the past. Whatever. Anyway, that concerns me. As far as the Ashland Planning Board minutes, we had heard that Mr. Hilt's had some problems in Ashland. And as residents, we wanted to verify that before we just have hearsay. So, I went into the Ashland Planning Board minutes for the past year. Every time they met. And what I came up with and saw, and I have them printed out, was it appears as though last February, February of this year, there were several violations at Mr. Hilt's property in Ashland. He did not have a site plan for his enterprise that he was doing, and a cease and desist was ordered. A week later, according to the Planning Board minutes, they did receive a site plan, but it was not by a registered land surveyor. And the board requires, as most towns do, site plans have to be prepared by a licensed land surveyor. There was a site walk that was done on April 1st. According to the minutes of Ashland, Mr. Hilt said all his equipment... This is as of April 1st. All his equipment will be located on a 70-acre property he owns on Fairgrounds Road in Plymouth. All his equipment. And 10 days later, the board received an email from the engineering firm that represented Mr. Hilt's for Mr. Hilt's withdrawing his site plan. And the reason why I bring that up. This Plymouth property, as you know, we all just walked it. You can't see what's going on from the street. You have to walk in there. And for anybody to walk in there, I could walk in it before because I was given permission to. I can't do that now. That's his property, that's his enterprise. So, who is going to know what is going on in there? I'm sure the code enforcement officer is not going to take weekly walks. So, anyway, that concerns me. That's it.
Thank you. I mean, I will say that I very much understand the concerns about what's happened in Ashland. At the same time, we as a board have to look at this application and judge it on its merits. And I understand the concerns. Do other members of the public wish to speak?
Good evening, Nancy Comey, a butter at 260 Fairgrounds. At the last meeting, you folks mentioned there were many items on the checklist that were not prepared or offered by the applicant. Has there been any further progress there to your motion of accepting with knowledge that you would then have that information? Did you get the answers you were looking for?
We did, actually. I think we met all the things we asked for, Joseph. Is that correct?
The board did ask for a drainage study and erosion controls. And there are updated plans with the drainage study and erosion controls. And that includes the detention and infiltration pond.
That was the big sticking point, that we really didn't need that. And we were assured that it can get... You can get it to us fast, quickly, and we did. And we do have that information.
My question would be, are you setting decibel levels of sound for future code enforcement potential for levels? Because if you just let it be subjective or vague, you have no leg to stand on later on when it becomes a problem. Because if the pattern is that other towns are not allowing this expansion from the site plan, maybe somebody doesn't understand what a site plan is. And to Phil's point, that maybe the expansion should be within the site plan approval from the beginning and not after the fact when you can't do anything about it because the board didn't set any precedences, like gets definitive answers to the questions. And to clarify, some of the other items that you had, the question on the parking plan. My experience with site plans is the parking plan is one of the biggest bones of contention. One of the biggest things, that a site plan is set forth. And then a code enforcement officer might say, but you used over here for the parking. Your site plan has to be revoked. So, I wouldn't just let this stuff go by easily and just shove it through and approve it because it's going to come back to haunt us later, I swear to God. Protect the site plan integrity. I mean, the thing is, it's a reason why you're all here tonight and for the next three months to put this together. I would make Mr. Hilt's go through hoops before allowing it to just go through. Requires special exemption. You can't waive that. You have to make that happen. He has to go through those hoops to get that. He mentioned last time, there was a waiver because there was a building already on the property. If the site is subdivided, does that then make it... The house is no longer on that piece? I don't know. Something to think about. When is the double-lane driveway going to be put in? For the protection of the walkers, protection of... I mean, to me, that takes a long time to do.
It sounds like that would be a requirement, a condition of approval to have a driveway permit, a new driveway permit that would meet those requirements. Okay.
Okay. Yeah. I think that's all I had at the moment. Constituent letters. You did... So, all the questions were answered from the constituent letters? Because they did have a lot of questions. Set the decibel level, I think, is the highest one on my list. Because once the noise starts, you'll have no proper recourse to remove it because you didn't set a number. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one thing I'll address there in terms of the special exceptions. If in fact, all that happens there is...
Vehicular sales and repair.
Vehicular sales and repair. Thank you for the phrase. Then there would be no need for special exception. But you also can't go beyond that use.
But you're also setting yourself to lose. You're setting your ZBA... You're sending a packet to the CBA that's not complete because you already know the other four things are going on. It's not... Those are not going to go away just because the site plan is defined as vehicle, sales, and repairs. Do you see what I mean? Like, it's already there.
I do.
It's existed in your eyeball. It's there.
And that is a compliance issue that would have to be followed up by the town and potentially vigorously, you know, I don't know. But that would have to be followed up not by this board, but by the town. But if it's a known issue, then...
Then how can you accept a site plan already knowing that the other things are happening there? It's to me that the site plan has to be...
There would be inspections as part of the process of the progress. And as that process moves on, evidence would have to be made that those other uses are not being followed or implemented, whatever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, not your way.
Hi, Katie Batalak, Brookside Drive. I just wanted to voice my concurrence with the Skinner's letter, with Elaine Belkus, and with Nancy. I'm one of the abutters at 21 Brookside Drive. I'm on the right, on the right of the left of the Skinner's. And also Nancy, especially Nancy's comment about decibel levels. I think objective criteria that can be easily measured would be a great idea. We don't have to spend time analyzing what it means. If you've got a number, you've got a number. So, I just wanted to voice my support for those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
You get up just for that?
Yeah, you may.
I just have a question because I don't know the rules, regulations. Is what's happening there now, as we saw in our site walk, considered a non-conforming use of that land?
You know, I don't think I necessarily want to weigh in definitively on that question.
Okay.
Because I'm not the one charged with that duty in this town.
Who is?
That would be, well, the select board. But the code enforcement officer more specifically would be the one to be looking into that.
So, if I wanted to make a complaint about what's going on there now, I would address my complaint to the code enforcement officer?
I mean...
To the...
If you come into town...
To the town.
If you just come into town hall or call town hall, that you can get directed to the right place as well.
Okay. So, it's not you guys?
It's not us, no.
Okay.
The town manager, I'm sure, would be receptive.
And there is a letter from him. Somebody has filed a complaint to him.
Yes.
Right, Miller. And I speak neither for nor against the application. I just want to help with some definitions. First, people getting where they try and articulate what's commercial, what's industrial. I would like to add the possible that if you were doing a single-family home and you're going to put in a stormwater culvert, you might come up with the engineering plan that have volume velocity index needing a 12-inch or 14-inch culvert. If you were to put in three homes, you might want to upsize it and come up with a culvert that's 18 to 24. If you want to do several hundred acres and you get into, quote, "industrial-grade" level, you probably put in 24 to 36-inch level. So, the definitions of industrial deals with size. So, you can have a roadside market of vegetables having maybe 100 square foot of retail space. Or you could have 50,000 square foot of market basket. That's the difference between sizes of the word. So, the thing that... The other thing that I think would help us out is this board right here is an industry. In 2000, North American Industry Classification System came online. There's 1,185 industries in United States or North America. That's Canada, and the United States, and Mexico. Okay? Each one of those has a six-digit number. It tells you what the principal function of that industry is. And then right below it, it tells you what it doesn't do. And when a company or a person files with the Secretary of State down in Concord, you file, and that label that you put on there is a six-digit number. And why is that important? Well, when you come here to apply for an application for a building, we use the International Building Code System with the town hall. Then your paperwork goes up to the fire department, and they use the National Fire Protection Association codes and standards, which is specific to the type of use. And it would have where you are by your insurance company and your financial liability of complying are stuck with the definition of what type of industry you are actually filed with the Secretary of State. That is online, and that might help you with this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, for this particular application, we need to follow the definition of industry that is in our zoning ordinance.
That would be interesting to look at sometime.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? Or online, for that matter?
I'm David Kopp. I'm a member of the board on the Pine Gate community. And I'm here just to represent them and express our concurrence with the letter. No problem with people who are involved in excavation or construction. They're very important. We're all grateful for the services they can provide. There are places where they can run their businesses, and we don't believe that this is an appropriate place for them to do so.
Alright, so it is 8:03, and I will close the public hearing for now and bring it back to the board. So, where do we stand as a board right now?
I'm curious about bringing up the conversation about parking again. There's just a lot that I don't fully understand about what is required there. And then I'm curious to hear what other people... Whatever other board members think about the concept of the decibel level limits. It's also something I'm not familiar with as being something that is measured or how it's measured and how we would even go about doing that if we can.
So, that is a specific condition. In the zoning ordinance, there are criteria for special exceptions for industrial uses.
Okay.
And one of them is that there be no more than 70 decibels of noise at the property line.
But it's assuming it's an industrial use.
It's an industrial use.
It does not appeal... It does not apply to residential, to...
Vehicular, sales and repair.
If we're not determining... If we're not approving this for industrial use, then...
And we don't... We can't have that conversation.
And it's not up to us to decide. It would go to the ZBA for them to decide.
Okay.
So, the parking is in our site plan review regulations. And it is very much something we normally consider as part of a site plan. We do have the ability to waive that or anything really in our site plan review regulations. Not also in our zoning ordinance. However, whether we should is a whole other issue. And I... I mean, I brought it up for a reason. I think that, you know, the question of parking and whether or not we should have the limited parking and what the benefits of that might be in terms of protecting the public. Yeah?
So, if the parking was limited to, you know, whatever reasonable space around the building, does that then prohibit parking on any other parts of the lot?
No, it's simply... The purpose of the parking in the site plan is just to demonstrate that there's sufficient space for parking. that there's sufficient space for parking. You know, we don't require that it be treated with any particular surface, although there is, there is, there is a general...
There is a maximum parking space, and so if, if...
Is there?
Maximum or minimum?
You need, for going over 125, first 125% of the required parking, you need, what do you, Joseph, can you remember?
It's a special exception.
Special exception, okay. So to go over 125% of the required parking, you need a special exception. And that means if something, if a part of a plot of land becomes regularly used as parking, that could be interpreted potentially to be going over 125% by doing so.
Right.
And...
Whether or not it's paved.
And whether or not it's paved. And there's a reason we have the 125%, presumably, in our zoning ordinance, to limit the amount of parking unless there's a specific reason for it.
Yep.
And vehicular sales and repair is a little bit tricky there because parking, I do not, I believe we as a board have the ability to judge what is considered sufficient because there isn't a specific number of spaces for vehicular sales and repair like there would be for a auto service station.
Right. In the past, parking and vehicular sales display area have not always been considered to be the same thing for the purpose of, you know, right? They can be...
But if we decided a certain amount of area seems reasonable, and we call that the parking area, and then all of a sudden we start to go over, I...
So we can...
I'm not, I'm not actually sure. Joseph, can you clarify? Because if it's one of the types of parking with a specific number, and if you go over 125%, you're in special exception territory. If it doesn't have a specific number, but the planning board comes up with a specific amount of area for parking, what happens there?
Right. So other use, what you mentioned is other uses, which is in the parking table, it says "other uses shall have adequate spaces to accommodate customers, patrons, and employees must be provided as determined by the planning board under its site plan review procedures." So it's saying adequate. So how, you know, it's, it is, it's a...
Subjective.
Not an easy, right. It's not an easy...
Objective for minimum.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Is this amount adequate? You know, so that's more, there is no hard number dictated by a formula.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a bit difficult to say what's 125% of adequate.
Yeah.
So we have to, thank you.
Mike, did you have a?
Yeah, I would, I would be more concerned about the parking with the homes that are 220 yards away. If it was flat and the building was being built and they would utilize the parking right outside people's property lines, I would have a concern about that. But it just doesn't seem practical that he could use that space for parking because it is a very steep hill. So geographically, I think the people, which is what I'm most concerned about, is their standard, their way of being able to live their lives would be protected at least in the parking.
I guess one of my concerns is when you're dealing with vehicular sales and repair, you're going to have unregistered vehicles. And that's a given. It starts to become difficult to distinguish an unregistered vehicle intended for sale and repair from an unregistered vehicle that's been sitting on a lot for several years, who knows, doing what? And where do you distinguish then? I think in a traditional car dealership, it's a little bit easier. In this sort of situation, where do you distinguish unregistered vehicles for vehicular sales and repair versus what becomes a junkyard? And I think that it's a, if you go down to your local Ford dealership, I think it's pretty like easy to distinguish that. In this sort of case, it's harder to distinguish that, and I think that's one of the things that's sitting in the back of my mind. And we've had some issues in town with this issue in recent years and months. And I'm trying, in I guess my mind at least, to clarify, how do you draw that line in a way that's enforceable? And so we know we're dealing with vehicular sales and repair, and that's why we have unregistered vehicles versus a junkyard.
So do we need to...
I don't know the answer, but...
Do we need to be able to see where the parking will happen on this plan?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
You don't think so?
I don't.
Okay.
I wouldn't think so.
I don't think so either.
Okay. Other...
It's not like he's proposing to pave it and park only on the pavement.
Right, right.
Like, you know, we've, we've had other site plans come in, and they, they show an area that's for parking, and it's a gravel parking lot.
And he may have a motor home, that's, he may have a motor home that comes in that's 50 or 60 feet. He may have an excavator or dozer that's coming in for repairs, and it's...
On a practical level, I, I get this and why the limiting that area might not just be practical. It's, it's the potential for other uses that's really kind of getting me here.
Yeah.
And if this does start to become a place to run a construction business out of or a industry like the processing of gravel and sand and anything else like that, how do we distinguish those vehicles that are owned for that purpose and parked there for that purpose versus those that are there for vehicular sales and repair versus those that are there potentially becoming a junkyard? And it's, I'd like to think that, like, none of this should really be a concern, and it'll all just sort itself out. But I know this town has dealt with these issues very recently, and I think it is something we should be aware of and try to think about ahead of time. Yes?
The two unregistered vehicle thing is sort of, I can see this if it was a bunch of junk piled there, and it looked like a junkyard. And, but if someone like me or anyone else has, maybe has a truck, they have four other trucks for parts for it, and there's an old truck, or they just have parts for it like I have had for their vehicle, and I don't get rid of it, you know? It's not a complete vehicle. Some of them might be complete, but I've had it there for parts. Or might be, I got a race car, actually a demo car. That's not registered. I might use again. It's beat up. I got it down, you can't see it. I don't see one thing, I'd be one thing, all this stuff is very visible, but it isn't very visible at all, you know? And it's not like it just strewn all over the place to make it look like someone just dropped a bomb there, and there's all these trucks sitting there, which I've seen, we have seen. And I've seen a lot of places implement that, you go by, that really look like, you know what? You could put this stuff someplace else besides having it right there. That I, you know, as far as the construction business goes, I mean, it is construction. And what he has up there, I don't see it being classified as junk, and I think it's hard to categorize it as, as parking space, you know, I, myself, I mean, I don't, it's very well placed, you know? And it is not like it's, it's got a bunch of different vehicles that, they got abandoned vehicles that are just really look like it should be junk, you know? I think it has to do with either the business he wants to start or that. I think I, I see this whole thing with this two-registered car thing being sort of a mixed bag here, and I understand where it's coming from. I think also it limits people on some things that, what you can have, what can you have and what can't you have? And what do you consider a junkyard? I mean, junkyard, I've seen junkyards, and they know there's good ones and there's really terrible ones.
I think I know what you're getting at. And can I, can I explain something?
Yeah, sure.
So the prohibition on two unregistered vehicles is in, is in the state RSAs. That's not anything we can change. The vehicular sales allows for more than two unregistered vehicles, specifically because you might have a stock of vehicles that are not currently registered because you're trying to sell them, right? But if, I mean, if you or I had three unregistered vehicles, technically any of us would be in violation of that RSA, and the town could enforce that. But, you know, he's applying for a permit for vehicular sales and repair, which would, would allow him to have more than two unregistered vehicles on the site. But I, I understand John's concern, and I...
It's not just a junkyard. It's also the potential of storing equipment for his business, which is not what we're approving.
Right. Yeah. No, I, I think there needs to be, I, I think we will, if this site plan for vehicular sales and repair is permitted, I think we will have to include very specific language about other industrial uses not being part of the site plan approval.
Yeah. And I, and my concern is that they start to look kind of similar in some ways.
I, I agree.
And that's my biggest concern.
One other thing.
Yeah.
So last month and this month, they, people have brought up the pedestrian, pedestrian crossings, concerns about the pedestrians. And I'm not sure whether the applicant, who probably has lined many parking lots for commercial buildings that he's worked on, maybe if he could work with the select board in identifying a nice little crosswalk for the pedestrians, he might be willing to paint it and line it for the town. That's kind of a little freebie to help the pedestrians be a little bit safer, and if kids are riding that road, 65 homes, that's a lot.
I have a feeling it's more about even just being on the side of the road rather than just crossing the road.
They mentioned crossing last month, and that's the part, if we could at least take care of that and line it so everybody's aware that's where the crossing spot is, and work with Joe to find the best spot to line it. And it's, it's not a lot of effort, but...
There are a bunch of issues.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you want to articulate them, Phil?
One is the road isn't even lined. And I, I think the town's policy is that they don't line roads of that size, no center line, no sidelines. It's probably not wide enough to line it anyway.
Yeah.
I'm just saying the crossing.
So you're gonna, you're gonna put a crosswalk on a road with no lines? Like, that's, it seemed, I, I can't imagine how that would even work. I mean, usually you put a crosswalk at like an intersection where a yellow line stops, like, I just don't know how that works.
Well, and there's also other issues about the way this conversation is coming up in terms of...
I agree. And, you know, if, if we're mandating off-site improvements, that's a different ball of wax.
But we're not, and it sounds more, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should pursue that.
We should do some finding of facts.
Okay. I'm not sure we're ready for that.
I'm not either.
I'm personally not. I mean, there's nothing stopping us from doing findings of facts. It doesn't mean we have to move to the next step from there.
It helps us to make our decision.
So I'm, I'm actually not really comfortable that...
So before we, actually, before we even get there, if I may, Sue, did you, you mentioned potentially getting an engineering review?
Yeah, should we do, should we have the Vignali review what has been submitted?
Typically, we do.
I think, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I certainly don't know how to read all that stuff.
Does the board feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
And does the applicant feel comfortable with the fees involved in the engineering review?
So as an explanation of that process...
So that there would have to be an escrow set up.
Yeah, there would be an escrow account set up, which the applicant would put an amount into that escrow account in an amount determined by the town's engineer to be, you know, suitable for his peer review of the proposed plans. That, once that escrow is set up, he would review, be paid out of that escrow, and then anything that may be left over after his review is returned to the applicant, and he provides a memo or summary of findings.
And the board is, the board is comfortable with this? Yeah?
Yes.
Anybody not?
I'm, I'm still questioning whether or not the, the use of the property is adequately defined enough to even send it out for engineering review. You know, the application clearly doesn't, as far as I can tell, the application still does not state that this is for vehicular sales and repair.
Although the applicant has told us that verbally.
Yes. Right.
And we accepted it.
What's that?
It was written on the application.
Was it?
You know, I thought I saw it in our first reading, but after reviewing it now...
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if it's on the current, I'm not sure I see it on the current one.
It would be the first one.
Means I don't, I don't see it on the application itself unless it's somewhere else in the plans, potentially.
I mean, the, the brief description of the project says it's a building, a 50 by 100 steel building with a 30 by 40 wood frame off the gable end building. Building will be in the field. The road to the field is before the hill on the property. I mean, it doesn't talk about uses, it doesn't describe uses adequately to, to understand, you know...
Do we have a location in the application?
That's the application.
For, for that statement?
Mm.
I mean, if there's not a place for it to be actually put down there, we can't really...
But I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we need to, like, yes, we should have, but I'm, what I'm saying is...
Usually the plan would, would, would show a detail with the, the uses and our, any conditions that...
But if it's, if you can't say that's what it normally has, you know, some people who walk in and don't know what the plan normally has, you know, if, if that's what we desire, we need to have that on our application.
Well, I would say, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I know we've, we've had this discussion before, I think. However, we've gotten a verbal, that this is the intent.
Right.
And we've heard some concern about whether that will all, be all that happens there. But as a board, we've, we've seen some things that make it look like more might be happening. And this is why we have the, the words are slipping my mind right now.
Third-party review.
The, well, not only a third-party review of the, of the engineering, but also the, the check-ins basically for the site plan once it's approved, the names, the words that slip in.
Instruction, inspection.
Thank you, Joseph. It's been a long day.
So I have a question. What would a review by Mike Vignali, we're not looking at curb cuts, we're not looking at...
Storm, it would be a verification of stormwater for, quantifications, or review of the, the engineering on that.
So we just, we want to show that the math is correct, that it's done to state standards, and I wonder if the approval, if, if we do get to that point, could be contingent upon verification of...
I would recommend against that because if we give a conditional approval and something comes back that it's not meeting the standards, then a new plan is going to have to be submitted, and then that's on Joseph to approve rather than the planning board.
And resubmit, renotice all the abutters, all that stuff.
Well, that might not even happen at that point because we've already conditionally approved it, and it, it all falls on one person to make that call then.
That's a very call.
And I would not be comfortable with that.
Did we get lighting information?
Yes.
There's a description of full cutoff lights, but it's not shown. There's no impact area. I don't think there's, I haven't seen a lighting plan that shows that.
Where's the elevation of the...
It's in the packet.
Would you like to speak to the lighting, or?
Is the lighting on the plan? Did I miss it?
It's not. There isn't really any exterior lighting except for, sorry, if it is...
If you, yeah, please. Could you tell us where it is at least?
There's a note on one of the sheets that says that there will be downward-facing cutoff lights.
Okay.
And they will mostly be right around the building itself?
It's just a note.
Okay, on the building itself, okay. On the exterior.
Wall packs, downward-facing wall packs.
And so I imagine none of the lighting will touch the property lines and... Wouldn't be able to know. Okay. I do not believe it would be visible from the road either. Okay.
So one thing that we have discussed, and I'm sure Neil remembers, is what brings it to a standard of engineer review? And I'm, I'm just trying to remember what triggers that? Is it, I have no clue. I can't remember.
I'm not sure there is one particular metric that we use, but usually it's a scale of project, and this scale of project typically in the past, we have brought to engineering review. That's, we don't have a particular number or anything, right, Joseph?
That's correct. There's no cutoff in the site plan regulations that specifies, but it's, the board has a sort of... but it's, the board has a sort of blanket authority in the site plan regulations to ask for third-party reviews, basically, you know, as deemed necessary to, to ensure compliance with the regulations. There's not a specific amount of disturbed area or, or anything that says yes versus no, it's typically, what it is asked for is a third-party review.
My recollection, typically something of this scale, we've asked for that.
Well, you know, but the, and that brings us back to the point where it's like we're in between two things, because the scale of the application is eighteen thousand feet altogether, and it's sixty-two hundred square foot building, not much of a scale at all.
Right.
But what we see, and the concerns we hear, both major scale, which is once again the conflicting part.
I mean, there's, so there's the building itself and the immediate area, there's the swell, and then there's the detention area.
Yeah. So on the...
It's not one of the biggest applications we've seen, obviously, but my recollection is typically we do ask for it.
Right, because amount of disturbed area, which maybe this doesn't include the swell in the pond, maybe this is just like the building, because that's eighteen thousand seven hundred square feet, so maybe that doesn't include the swell in the pond. Which actually, now I think about it, I think we asked for that after the first meeting.
So, in light of all of this, regardless of if we approve, disapprove, conditionally approve, whatever, this evening, what are we looking for? So it sounds like most of us, I mean, do we need to have a vote on this if we want the engineering review?
Do you need a vote on that, Joseph?
Um, I mean, if there's not full consensus, perhaps we should, if anyone wants to make a motion.
I'll make a...
Thoughts, Neil?
I'm gonna abstain.
I'll make a motion to have a third-party review, engineer's third-party review of the, what he has submitted for the...
Anybody want a second, or, or no? Okay?
Do we want to go to findings of facts then?
I want to talk about a few other things first, potentially. All right, so we did not get a second on that motion. It sounds like we are comfortable without a parking plan. I'm hearing from various members, I have some concerns about that myself, but I just want to clarify where we're standing on that. I, I have concerns about not having one for the reasons I mentioned, there might be other ways of addressing those concerns, so...
His application says he's gonna have six parking spaces.
But it doesn't, there's no plan that depicts them or shows where they are.
Correct.
Although on the sidewalk, the applicant did indicate they would be in the front of the building and on the west end, on the north side of the building, which would be the front, and the west end of the building on the side.
Is a verbal description sufficient?
I mean, can you actually address the number of parking spaces issue? I mean, we, on the sidewalk, it was mentioned that there would be parking in front of the building. However, for sales, there might be, I don't know how many vehicles you're, you're considering for sales, but it might be parking beyond that. And this says six spaces here, and can, do you have any thoughts about that?
I thought it was drawn on there, there's a gravel park here, there's a gravel road, and the...
So is that where all the vehicles will be parked, including for sales? Actually, if you can come up to the podium to speak?
I have Joseph a question.
Let him, yeah.
That would be for employees and vehicles we're working on.
Okay. And what do you envision beyond that?
What you saw.
Okay.
Typically less than that, there's a little extra right now, but...
So further down towards the detention, the infiltration basin?
Yeah, maybe along that existing gravel drive, just like what's there, but we'll... The gravel drive is shown on the plan.
Now's my question, if the parking space is on the application, six employees, is different, say, say we're gonna have two hundred, just hypothetically, two hundred vehicles for sale there, would the application say two hundred and six, or would it just still say six, and then we want to delineate somewhere else that it was also two hundred, because it's really not parking spots, but two hundred spots for the sales of it?
I mean, clearly we're talking about more than six spots.
Sure, oh yeah, I know it's on two hundred.
I, I get, I get what you're saying about what will be on the application here.
Yeah.
But we obviously need more than six spaces, and... In terms of a scale of auto sales, I mean, two hundred versus thirty is a huge difference. But I mean, it, it brings us back to the question of, do we have a spot that's of a certain size that limits the amount of parking? Or do we just say whatever? I mean, is he gonna have two hundred vehicles there? I assume not.
I hope not.
I assume not. On the other hand, the, the part of the job of the planning board is to anticipate worst-case scenarios.
So, and, and keep in mind, he may sell this and another, another business may come in with vehicular repair and sales, and it might be other, someone other than the different plans.
Yeah.
Seems like it would be a good idea to...
As an approved user, ready.
New Car Ford might buy it, and have it be their off-site storage and repair facility, like, and, and it would not require revisit to the site plan. So we have to think about all of the potential outcomes down the road.
This is where, I mean, I'm not uncomfortable with saying, like, we should actually, like, explain where the parking is gonna be.
Yeah.
Like we typically do on a site plan.
I would agree with that.
So you're asking for a... Should we make a list of requests for updates on the plan, on the application then? Is that what you're asking, John?
I'm putting it out there that we, for me, I wouldn't mind seeing that, and I have reasons I wouldn't mind seeing that on one person.
So I think a request for clarification on, or a loss, whatever, I'm sorry, whatever the term values, basically, a clear delineation of stor, you know, storage of unregistered vehicles for sale on the slot is not something that's, that's out of the scope of the planning board request. That makes perfect, if it's not clearly delineated in our bylaw, or our ordinances for vehicular sales and repair of what's required in the site permit, then I think requesting that information is not outside of our purview.
I agree, Jason.
So we do have six parking spots in the building.
Those are six parking lots for, as outlined, for employee and, and business parking. The concern of the planning board is, where is the, where are the vehicles for sale going to be stored on the site?
And you said along the road probably, and, and I would...
On the road, it's not gonna be inactive, we're not gonna have traffic like it's inactive, I mean, it's just an existing road. It's not like, and it's also, we're not the kind of place like New Car you bring up, like, nobody's gonna come in there and look at our, it's gonna be like a, there's not a salesman on staff, it's not that kind of business. It would be like, we set up an appointment and go meet somebody, like when you sell something out of your backyard, that kind of thing more than...
To speak to Phil's concern, let's say you sold this piece of land in ten years, and someplace like New Car bought it, they'd have an approved use on there already for vehicular sales and repair without any limitation of the extent of that. And are we as a board comfortable, I mean, as a board, we have to think forward, that you're not potentially gonna own this forever, and what are we approving here that might be beyond your ownership or whatever? And I think that's Phil's concern, and it could be a different scale than you're talking about. And we've already approved that for future owners as well, once we approve it for you, and I think that's the concern.
Yeah.
Mike?
I'm not sure if there might be a middle, a way to find a middle road on that. What about some sort of condition that parking, so that we don't get a new, new car's not coming in there? I don't think anybody is coming into that spot other than what's there, but is there a way to put a condition of no more than X amount of vehicles that are for sale? And I'd be okay with that if we said, what would you feel comfortable with?
I, I don't, I don't know, it's not like a huge part of our business, we just have...
We said no more than fifty?
Yeah, that's more than sufficient.
What number would you say?
Fifty's fine, that's...
So that kind of limits...
That's way more than I'd plan on, but that limits anything in the future, so...
Jason, do you have a...
Yeah, would, can you clarify about the comment of that, that's, you said some, that's a, not a large part of our business? What do you, can you clarify what you mean by that statement?
We're not, I mean, we do sales, but that's not what we do. Some, some years we'll sell some vehicles, and like, this year, we haven't really sold any. It kind of depends on how the truck market is, so... Which is why we have more now than we typically do.
I was just gonna say, that's a lot of vehicles.
It is, but...
Or some years we might sell some, that's a lot just sitting there.
Irrelevant to this, the interest rates are high this year, people can't get finance to buy the trucks. One of those trucks sold seven times this year, nobody was able to pull through, so that's why they're still there. It's not typical to have that many, that's just where it is right now. That's about the most, that, that is the most it's ever been right now.
If the board feels that it fifties too much? Well, I think, I think part of it then extends to is not just the storage of vehicles for sale, but storage of vehicles for repair also. You know? Where, you know, if the main crux of the business is, as the applicant's saying, is gonna be the repair of vehicles with some sales going on, like, where are the vehicles being worked on gonna be stored? You know, I understand there's a garage bay, but sometimes, you know, you'll have vehicles that exceed that capacity. And so where are those vehicles gonna be stored if we only have six parking spaces for, you know, the employees and whatnot?
So... I'm hearing some degree of consensus or compromise or something about somehow limiting what could happen there. And that could be to a certain place, and it could be to a certain number of vehicles, and I think we can probably decide something amicably, you know, agreeable there. And, so that might be a, a condition or part of the, a new plan that we, that we see. There's... I, I think, given the concerns and given what we've seen, if we approve vehicular sales and repair, implicit in that is that you can't do these other things. I think the conditions should spell it out very clearly, just to kind of cross the Ts and, yeah, dot the Is and all that, just to, since we have heard concerns, and, and...
Can we do that in our finding of facts?
Yes.
I'm just gonna question, and that whole thing with the new car, and if he sold it down the road, which I totally understand, and someone else goes in there, and we've already passed something that they can go, wow, we can do this. Is, can there be a stipulation of when we approve it, that we say, if it's sold again, or if someone else owns it, they have to go? That that's a one-time deal?
Site plan, once the site plan is approved, this runs with the land.
So they can still...
Unless the use is, unless the use becomes non-conforming and is discontinued. So if, 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 for some reason, if vehicular sales and service are no longer allowed in that zone, and the use is stopped for a year, then that use can't be started again.
Yeah, you have to go through the whole thing again.
No, there, at that point, you would have to get a variance to continue. If, if it becomes non-conforming, so if zoning changes and, and it's no longer a permitted use, you can continue to operate, but if there's a break in operation of a year, then it's, then you can't restart. That's kind of the concept of grandfathering, you can continue a non-conforming use. But if it stops...
Is that a town thing or a state, huh, state, state thing it is?
With the proximity to the homes, anything that we can do to safeguard the neigh, the neighborhood, we should do with conditions, and...
I have a question, I mean, this is a pretty big building, you can get a lot of big vehicles inside. Do you anticipate having to work on vehicles outside of the building?
No, not typically, we've designed the building so we can put dump bodies up inside the building, so...
That would be, that's my concern, I, I was just curious if we, if we should expect to hear air ratchets outside, outside of the building.
I'd be shocked if you could hear them anywhere, we currently are across the street from a trucking company, and we can't hear there, and there's no trees in between us, and we can't hear what they're doing, and they're running air guns all the time. It's actually something...
I'm trying to figure, you know, think about worst-case scenario, what, what would be the loudest thing that would be happening there outside of the building, and what would affect the neighbors?
Yeah, it's not that loud, it's only loud if you're under the truck with the air gun, really.
So if we do approve this, I don't, Mike's asking for our findings of fact. One thing I'm, would consider is typically we ask for, and it's in our regulations, a certain timeline for all the conditions to be met, and a certain time work, timeline for active and substantial development. Given the proximity to residential properties, I wonder if we should put a timeframe in for the actual construction and site work, and for making certain that processing of any materials from the site beyond what's necessary directly for...
Vehicular sales and repair?
For, for putting the building in base.
Oh, I see, okay.
Does not happen there. In other words, if materials are being excavated for the, for the site work, and we could get like gravel grinders on there or something to process the materials while we're doing site work, given the proximity to residential properties, that that would not take place. That any processing happen off-site, and the ex, that the construction and site work follow some timeline beyond just starting active and substantial development to protect the neighbors from undue harm from a long construction process, potentially, I mean, it might not be long, but just in case. I would wonder if that would be a potential condition.
John?
Yeah?
I would agree that if we could tighten up the building process, I think that's a great idea. I think processing, I'm not sure what it's gonna take to put that lot in, I don't know if it's a full found, I'm assuming it's just a slab with puddings? Doing extra work off-site, and then trucks hauling back and forth with the truck tailgates, making it more noise, I think we just probably need to go with more with what's best practice, and what normally would, would happen on a site like that.
You'd also be adding more truck traffic, and you'd also be looking for an off-site lot, which doesn't exist.
In my mind as well, and I guess my, my concern is that... Given some concerns we've heard, this could become... And given that this is part of your business, more broadly speaking, that site work could start to... I'm, I'm again, kind of worried about the gray area.
So I don't, I don't think you, that the, it's not as loud as it used to be to process material, if you're gonna screen some topsoil, it's not, I don't think you'd be able to hear it anywhere near...
That would not be loud, no, but...
There's no, it's all sand in the ground, so there's no rock to crush, so there's no noise involved with that. So I'm not sure what the concern is, but...
I'm concerned that more materials can start being processed, once we start processing materials there.
I don't, I would go to...
I don't, I would go to a limit and say that there's probably very, I can't, I'm having a hard time picturing what you would process to, for, to put in the auto repair building.
No, I get that. I just also know what the broader business is.
Right.
Which is already doing that kind of work.
Sure, yeah.
And, um.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I see that is easy to, like you said, sand, that's sand, that's. And I am hesitant to restrict someone on how they can, the amount, how they can proceed in their building.
You see, you do it to where I'm going?
Yeah, at two AM, I do not think, yeah. Right. Not the best time on a budding neighborhood. But I, and I, I'm gonna use the other thing, but like from nine to three, say, say, just, just petitious. Say, you can build between nine and three. That's so limiting to accomplishing that project.
I guess my concern is I've, we went to the site walk, we've seen potential evidence of other sorts of work and we know what the larger business enterprise is here.
Yeah.
And we could easily slip in more kind of processing than we need for this particular site work. Um, I'm trying to be delicate about this, but.
Yep, I got you.
Maybe not.
What about hours of business?
What's that?
What about hours of business?
Um, it's a good question.
I think you already answered that.
Like if they're after.
It wasn't a definite. It was, oh, maybe seven to five or maybe this, maybe that.
Oh, there's always.
With some hours of business so that the neighbors don't have to listen to stuff at six o'clock in the morning.
Large vehicles coming.
Right. Yeah, typical hours of seven to five would be.
Typical hours.
Is that something?
There's always, there's, when you're doing repairs.
We're getting a lot of these like.
You're, you're gonna have that. There's gonna be, and when you're repairing things, you can't control if something breaks at a weird hour that needs to be back on the road. I mean, you just can't.
And I understand that, but we've got neighbors. We've got neighbors that are really close and there's backup alarms. And yes, they're going to hear some noise and they sleep. They don't like to, maybe some of them don't get up until seven o'clock in the morning. I get having to repair that stuff. We deal with it every day, but we also have restrictions on us. So Sundays, I don't know what you do on Sundays. Do we restrict Sundays? I mean, what, I, I, I think those are things that we need to consider because of the neighbors. It's a very close neighborhood and it's, there's a lot of people there.
Yeah, and maybe between business and non-business, or customer-facing or not customer-facing. For example, if you need a piece of glass for a dump truck, glass gets delivered during the night. You know, glass.
Really?
Yeah, glass, drive-by, grain-stained glass.
Yeah.
Like at two AM.
It's busy.
And yeah, there's like, oh my god, they're getting robbed. No, it's the, it's the, it's the glass fenders dropping off the glass.
Interesting. Is this still like a traffic thing, probably?
What's that?
Less traffic at that time of day.
I actually don't know why they do it. It's an odd thing in the industry. Okay, yeah, so, and I know that's a small, minute thing, but it's, I don't, I don't know, no.
Well, there, John was just talking about defining those specifically for the construction period of the business at first, right?
Well, yeah, but then there's a broader question about hours of the business. And like, looking at other auto, like, service stations, for example, they often have certain hours of business during which time they do the work and make noise. And, and occasionally, they get a delivery of a vehicle out of that time as much as possible, just to drop it off because you gotta put it somewhere when it's broke and if you're getting a tow or whatever. And.
Yeah, good, yeah.
Um, but the work necessar, doesn't necessarily happen and it happens during business hours.
Yeah, and there is a definition between that, like a tertiary thing happening versus the primary aspect of the business.
And, I mean, in, in reality, if we had some hours of operation where, during which work happened and occasionally something else got dropped off and there were no complaints, it probably would not be an issue.
Exactly. That's, I mean, it.
Yeah, but to actually define what are the hours of operation, given how the proximity is not a terrible idea. Or at least the limits of the hours of operation.
I'm just considering the neighbors, that's all.
No, I, I, I understand.
I agree, so. Are we asking for the applicant to define that on the, on the site plan?
That would not be a bad idea. It's, is there a consensus about that broadly? Yeah, okay.
I, I think it would be irresponsible for us. I, I don't think it's something we can impose on anyone. I think if, if the applicant wants to offer that, I think we can consider it.
Would that?
But I think if the applicant doesn't wanna offer hours, I don't, I, I think that's his prerogative.
If you put hours on a site plan, does that carry with the property?
It does.
Definitely.
Wow.
As long as that's.
For that use, right?
Until that site plan is modified.
The site plan is, is, you know, tied to the property, not the owner. So, once again, as like Phil has been talking about, what we set as guidelines now is gonna carry on, you know, perpetually. The question I would have is, you know, as Phil brought up is, do we have a purview? You know, as a planning board to request hours of operation?
We do have a purview to some extent for some of these disturbances to neighborhoods and stuff like that and noxious.
Well, I mean, I, I think if the applicant chooses not to define hours and wants it to be potentially operated any hour of the day, then we have the option of, of saying that's not in.
Yeah.
That's not a suitable use for this neighborhood.
So in that regard, we do have some purview over this. Depends how the conversation happens, I guess, with what you're saying, but, yeah. Do you feel comfortable with that? Having some limitations on hours of operation?
Seven to five as the hours, we could do that. I don't know that it's, I don't know that I put it on the site plan. You could put it on the approval. I mean, you guys can dictate that.
Well, it, it makes a difference to put it on the site plan versus having a kind of verbal.
I, I would put it in writing, but I don't, I've never seen hours of operation on a site plan. Is that?
I mean, we could put it in the conditions of approval, I suppose.
Yeah, that would be a lot easier.
Joseph, do you have any thoughts on putting it on the site plan versus the conditions of approval?
No specific comments on the, you know.
Either way should be binding.
If it's the plan signed by the board or a notice of decision signed by the board.
Should be either way, it's fine.
I think it still covers what you're looking for.
Yeah, okay. So you said seven to five?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What about the construction timeline?
Sure you're ready to start it, the moment you're given the okay?
Probably itching.
I wish, yeah.
You're gonna get concrete in the ground before winter, before it freezes?
That's up to you guys.
Is that your goal?
That is the goal.
Okay.
What do you, oh, excuse me, what do you see as like a reasonable timeline to get this done? Again, to protect neighbors and such from like prolonged development and all that.
I wouldn't even, getting subcontractors to do things right now, it can take months to get somebody to even show up, so. I wouldn't dare say. I would say it would be more sporadic.
Because you don't put up steel buildings, that's a sub.
Got to find, so I haven't done that. I got concrete lined up and.
That's it.
So, and I get that that could be really difficult.
It, and it can, and it can take some time, so I don't, I wouldn't dare say, and I wouldn't, I actually, I mean, I run a site work business. I don't have, I can't just take my whole crew and stay on my own project, start to finish, so it would be.
When, when you have time.
Yep.
Is there a possibility that? I know you never know what's gonna happen if somebody's gonna back out or something last minute. That we could get like all the ducks in a row and say, once active and substantial starts, with hopefully everybody in a row, that we could have some kind of reasonable timeline? So even if we don't know when we're starting, that. I, I'm, I'm looking out for neighbors here who are concerned about a long construction process disrupting their lives and trying to compress that as much as possible to minimize their own discomfort.
I understand. I, I mean, realistically, to prep for footings is gonna take me one day. They might sit there for three weeks to a month before the concrete guy shows up, so. Nobody will, it's not gonna bother anybody, except I, I'd be surprised if they even heard me that one day, but.
I think if we were to explore this idea further, we would want the start time after, not, not to start it at concrete, after, to start after concrete. Cause I can foresee, you want that concrete in before the plants close.
Right.
If so, something, if a schedule opens up in the spring, it's there, ready to go. Versus that starting the clock.
I understand the importance of being flexible.
Yeah.
And at the same time, I'm really trying to protect the neighbors.
Yeah, no.
I, I don't wanna, I mean, I don't want them calling and complaining about what we're doing. We're not, I don't think that they're gonna hear anywhere near as what they think they're gonna hear. We're not that loud. I only have two employees that work with me in the field. We're not some sort of massive company that's running around. I mean, I got two truck drivers and.
Are those the guys that were there tonight?
Those are the guys that work in the truck shop. That's why they were.
Okay.
Yeah, those are the mechanics.
All right.
Yeah.
Nice to meet those guys. I'm glad, thanks for bringing them out.
Yeah, took a bit of talking engines.
John?
Mike?
Um, can I ask, what do you envision being the loudest part of the construction process? Is it putting the metal?
Probably the steel foreman swearing at the crew. I mean, realistically, there's nothing that's, that maybe we're in the impact guns, putting the metal, putting the bolts through the steel building. I mean, that's probably the loudest.
Screw guns.
Yeah.
And that's not.
That's probably the loudest, really.
So that's not your crew, that's.
That's not mine, no.
When you hire someone, they're coming in and they're gonna do that whole thing.
Yep.
They're not gonna wanna come back and forth.
Yep.
So it probably will be two weeks?
I would say they'd have a steel building like that up in two weeks.
Once they start.
Yep.
Okay.
Once you get them locked in and they show up, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's tough out there.
That's the tricky part. That's why I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna say a set deadline and then not be able to do it cause people don't show up.
Yeah.
Um, what about Joe Fagnett's request for the driveway?
He has the permit. He signed the permit already and everything.
So he doesn't want the driveway widened?
He has that in the permit. It's written, what is written in the permit, sounds exactly like what you guys read off earlier.
Okay.
So that's a new permit for a widened driveway?
Yep.
Okay.
It's the existing driveway. He just added that we're gonna add an apron. We're gonna pave an apron on the road and he has that permit. I just, I didn't bring a copy with me.
As I was driving out, I noticed that the two gates that close off the opening were both pretty wide. I think if you used full width there, it's.
Those are coming out.
Are they?
Cause you don't wanna gate at the road, cause if somebody actually has to stop and open it, they're in the road.
Yeah.
So those would go down near the tree line.
My, my observation, there was more about the width of the roadway in between the posts. And there was already, it seemed like there might be room for two vehicles to pass there.
Well, whatever the driveway.
There is, but it's gonna, I think it was twenty-eight feet for the first fifty feet off the road or something like that. There's, there's dimensions in the driveway permit. But he's already, like I said, approved.
All right.
It's wider, it's wider than.
It's wider.
Wider than Beechhill Road.
Probably, yeah.
Any other concerns or questions here? Or comments about our readiness or not for going forward? Well, where we're at is.
Should we start with findings of fact?
We can start with findings of fact if you want. Matt, Matt asked for a recap, but. I think we've crossed all the Ts here about regulations that we need to cross, I think. We got the driveway. Findings of fact, of course. One of the big issues with the use, and I think we should really delineate that carefully in our, in our conditions. And, and some of the other things you just talked about. And I think that's where we are. So if we, I think we could do a findings of fact.
What about the, the, did you do the development agreement with the town?
Well, that would be one of the conditions.
Okay.
You're comfortable doing a development agreement with the town to?
I'm just reading Joseph's recommendations.
Wanna, wanna read the full bullet point?
Sue?
What?
Do you wanna read that bullet?
Oh, condition that the applicant executed development agreement with the town prior to starting development and provide funds and escrow to allow for construction inspection by the town's engineer. The amount of the escrow shall be determined by the town's engineer.
Yeah, okay.
So you just want, you want Mike to come out and inspect our work?
Yeah, that's, that's fairly standard, yeah. All right, so if we wanna do findings of fact, we can do that?
He has an approved septic.
Yeah.
Finding of fact, he stated his, his hours should be seven and five AM.
Okay.
I would say the applicant has indicated that the use would be vehicular sales and service, which isn't allowed use in the zone.
The, um, the site plan meets all dimensional requirements for setbacks and such.
The applicant has indicated, under most circumstances, service will be conducted inside of the building, thereby minimizing potential off-site noise impacts.
Did we have a number of vehicles that they agreed to for the?
Just wrote that down.
I don't, I didn't write the number down.
The applicant has indicated that he's willing to limit the number of vehicles, although we have not actually finalized on the number or space, whenever that may be yet. So we should delineate that before we conclude this. Thank you for remembering and you were reading my mind.
So that, that's a.
Partial finding of fact there.
All right, partial. I will, I will offer a full finding of fact that downcast lighting has been proposed for the building, but no plan depicts the location of the lighting or the illuminated areas.
He's obtained all his permits needed from the town. State.
You could also mention on the lighting that all the lighting will be on the inside of the lot, not facing the property line. I'm not gonna put anything facing any.
Back of the building or anything.
So amending my finding of fact that the applicant indicates that all of the downcast lighting will be directed towards the.
Away from the neighbors.
Away from the neighbors.
On the north side of the building.
I'll have a compass.
I appreciate that clarification.
The applicant has provided a drainage plan and the planning board has not elected to submit it for engineering review.
And we can't do anything with the decibels, is that correct?
Correct, because it's an accepted use in the table and that, we only need that if it's by special exception.
For industry.
For industry.
It, it is one of the conditions of industry. I'm not sure that.
We're not.
I'm not sure that.
We're not doing that use.
Sorry. Uh, I, I will offer a finding of fact that several neighbor, neighbors have expressed concerns about the potential for noise emanating some, from the site. Increased traffic to Beechhill Road impacting both vehicular traffic and pedestrian use of Beechhill Road. So not, not that there's anything to do about it, but it's, it is a, a finding of our hearing.
Yeah.
An applicant has indicated during walkthrough that the barriers of trees between his property and the neighborhood adjacent is intended to stay other than his drainage pipe.
Yeah.
For the overflow pond, retention pond.
So, can, oh, yeah. I, I, I don't have any more findings of fact, but I did wanna circle back.
Parking?
To parking. Do we, I, I had drafted a, a condition of approval to, that was going to be limit parking to fifty vehicles total, considering vehicles in for service or sale. Would that be sufficient?
I believe so, yeah.
Those, do all the board members agree with that? I know some, some people were talking about smaller numbers.
Yeah, fifty seems high.
Fifty seems high, yeah.
What was that, Sue?
Fifty seems high.
I think what we were trying to do is limit so that it's not a car dealership, which might have hundreds.
Right.
Well, it is a car dealership, but not that kind of car dealership.
We, the important thing is scale and that's important, especially next to homes with kids that may be light sleepers that are newborns and, and I think that's important. Scale is very important and. So. Yeah. I'm okay with fifty, if the applicant can work around that.
I still think that fewer would be better.
Can we say fifteen?
I was gonna say twenty.
Yeah. With what he's provided, I mean, I don't know how many cars were on the, on the lot.
Right now, yeah.
I started counting and it was just like vehicles and I know there were some, I mean, how do we define a vehicle in this context? There are certain equipment that is.
In theory, a vehicle should be any that's registrable to be driven on the road.
Exactly, I know, if I said, it depends how we define a vehicle here.
Road-going vehicles.
Yeah. It seemed like about thirty to me. And you say that's probably the upper limit of where you'd be. And you say that's, that's probably the upper limit of where you'd be.
I would say. I, I think fifty covers. I mean, we're not gonna be near that, but I wouldn't wanna bring it down where, you know, if you said fifteen and I had sixteen in there, cause all of a sudden five people showed up for work. Are looking for work and that put us over the top and somebody shows up and.
So I, I did.
I would keep it at the fifty and.
So the, 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 the condition I wrote did specify vehicles for service or sale, so that your, your employees' vehicles would be exempted from that.
Okay.
Sorry, did I say service?
You, you, you might get a crew of ten people there and everybody's driving in a truck, right?
I got you.
You know.
Would, would you be willing to come down if it, you know, for vehicles of, and service or sale, if, if you're, if there's no limit on how many people you have?
I'm concerned about an unlimited number of people for other reasons. That we've talked about in terms of, I, I know we're gonna put conditions in about no other uses, um, but the, the difficulty of delineating um, employee parking for this particular use versus broader employee and, and um, business use parking that may go beyond vehicular sales and repair. And if we say that's unlimited, I'm a little bit uncomfortable about the grayness of defining that.
So you'd rather define total parked vehicles?
I would, personally.
I would say fifty might cover him, cover us. Um, if, if everything goes smooth and a year or two goes by and everybody seems happy and, and he's doing everything he can to appease, what would be the process if he says, my business is expanding a little bit, I'm doing really well, there's a lot of work for me here?
Site, site plan review.
Site plan review to increase it. And so it, it would um, incentivize the applicant to do everything he can to keep everybody happy. That he would have to come back more than fifty.
So.
Most of you who had qualms about fifty, um, and fifty as an inclusive number of all vehicles there, um, how do we feel about this?
I do not have a qualm with fifty if it's all vehicles.
Okay. Inclusive of employees and all that kinda stuff, yeah.
If you're ten employee vehicles, say five, just ten employee vehicles, you still have forty other spots, or I think it's still sufficient, but I don't.
That's fine.
I'd be hesitant to bring it, and I don't know what that number is, but down to a number where it's like, oh my gosh, if two more vehicles show up in the next week, I don't have two vehicles leaving and. I wouldn't wanna be so close to a number. And I don't know what that is, but.
Yeah, I mean, the number in my own mind was thirty, um, but um, I could be willing to be flexible. Um, do you have other thoughts?
I'm good with thirty.
Are you to go with fifty?
Sounds like an auction.
I, I, you'd be more comfortable with thirty?
I, I would at this point with the neighbors' comments.
Yeah.
Can you?
I'm still hanging up on the neighbors' stuff.
Yeah.
Just got one quick question. How does this vehicle sit in with, I would like trailers and stuff, like if, let's say is a car trailer or a box, is that, is that considered vehicles too? Cause I may not, I just cares. It is? Yeah, it is, okay. No, I just was wondering that.
Well, it's, it's defined in.
Our trailer, or trailers are defined in vehicle sales or repair.
And any kind of, what, what's, say, is a pay, a roller or something he had brought in, is that, that's all vehicles, right?
Is that? Sorry, one more time?
Like a roller or a?
A roller.
Patriot or whatever have you?
Those aren't really registered. A roller would not be.
More equipment than a vehicle.
Registered equipment.
Wouldn't have, oh, sorry.
It's more construction.
And why would the roller be there? Is it for repair or is it for?
It could be, I mean, what if?
Well, if it's not there for repair, then we've got a problem potentially.
What's that?
The question, the question comes from the purpose of the roller being there. If the roller's there for repair, then it could fall under the guy, it fall under the thirty or fifty vehicle limit that we're debating right now. The concern is with the applicant's other businesses, whether, why the roller is there.
I, I'd rather see a condition of no storage of off-highway equipment, since what, what we're approving is, is uh, vehicle service and repair. Or vehicle service and sales.
I, I just, um, I wanted him to be able to, if his, his business to flourish, like I want every business implement the flourish. I'm not sure whether two or three extra vehicles on the lot are going to add significant health or safety for the neighbors. I'm ju, I just threw out a number so that we're not looking at a large dealership, which we're really not approving today. And I'm looking at scale. That's why we're trying to define a number, cause once again, this site plan goes forward, whether he owns it or someone else owns it. So that's why we're trying to define a number that is adequate for the neighbors that's being, that's being, and protects us from future development. Yes, we want his business successful, but we don't want the business to be overly successful for the area that it's in, in conducive, in. Yeah, and I would agree. And I would agree, yeah.
I would, I could, my arm could be twisted to fifty, but I would be more comfortable with thirty.
I'm more comfortable with thirty as well.
Can you make thirty work?
You're counting trailers?
Yes.
I would be more comfortable with fifty, cause I don't know when trailers are parked. If those are counting, then I don't know.
What are the trailers there for?
Transport.
Repairs?
You have to go get, go get a piece of a quarter.
They'll be leaving. They won't be staying this, they'll be leaving. They'll be in and out like we prepare work.
Everything. Can we split the difference, say forty?
Forty, yeah.
Forty total vehicle, forty total vehicles on, on the lot, with the, with the condition of, condition of vehicles that are there, you know, vehicles that are not, I'm sorry. Vehicles that fall under the guise of vehicle sales and repair and no storage of other types of vehicles on the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. So are you saying forty vehicles onsite for sales and repair or total?
Forty, forty total vehicles.
Including?
Including those there for onsite and repair.
And employees.
Employees. I mean, if he's got thirty there now, he designated six parking spots, that's thirty-six. We're up.
Plus five in the garage.
Plus five in the garage. And, you know, that puts us up to, you know.
Already over his limit by one vehicle.
I see, okay. Yeah.
Forty? Huh?
Forty.
More the discussion goes on, I, I don't want him having to go out there and count vehicles every day.
Yeah.
And that's a, I.
I agree.
It just seems like that's maybe a little bit more of a.
I mean, I, I feel like we've heard a lot of concerns with the size of this project.
So, yeah, I mean, the downside of not having a number is there's nothing to enforce. You know, if, if it's never an issue and, and he's got fifty vehicles out there and nobody knows any better.
So if he's got thirty there, he's got, say.
The issue is, it's gotta be enforceable somehow.
Show up with ten just to do the building and build it.
So, question is, you guys didn't know those vehicles were there, nobody, they weren't, they're not hurting anything, they're not visible from anywhere. Why, why do we have to put a number on it where we're, only way anybody knows is if they went out in the field snooping around to see what I was doing.
This is also to protect us going, protect the town going forward and the neighbors going.
I agree with that, but why, what am I, I'm not, unless I'm creating a problem, which I'm not, I'm not interested in problems, I don't.
There can be.
If you're not creating a problem and you have forty-one vehicles, probably no one's going to enforce that.
Probably.
I mean, I know, like, I shouldn't say that probably.
But, but again, it's not you. What if the next owner comes in and has so many vehicles parked there that they're parked all the way out to the road?
No, we don't, I don't want that either, so.
But, but it's not just you, right?
And that's fine.
You, you, I hope you understand that we have to be considering future owners.
A hundred percent, so what can we do that protects the future, but also doesn't limit me too much? If I do have a couple of trailers that I need to park there, if I do have.
So, so keep in mind that if it, you know, if you find great success and you, you need a hundred vehicles there, you can always come in for a site plan, like a, a review of your site plan, right?
Right. Well, if I have that many vehicles, I probably have to build a big parking lot, so.
What's that?
If I had that, I'd probably need a bigger parking lot, so.
I just think about.
I'd be visiting anyway.
I just think about my little farm operation and if I count up all the vehicles that I've got right there and then my kids.
Are they registered? Doesn't matter.
No, no. My, I got five, six tractors that aren't registered.
Right, right, okay.
I've got one, one vehicle that just drives my men around. What are you running at vehicle sales and repair?
I don't wanna get too far off the uh, track here.
I do think.
But it takes.
It's getting late.
I do think that realistically, everybody understands a vehicle repair shop, you've got vehicles coming in, you've got vehicles leaving. Some have to sit out there for a few days waiting for parts, others come in. I don't think there's gonna be somebody with a drone going over you every day counting vehicles and saying, geez, he's got thirty-one vehicles there, we better get him out.
I don't think that either.
Don't think that's gonna happen.
But I don't want those phone calls.
And I don't think that's gonna happen. I just, I, I, I feel like, like they've said, we have to think about the future. Thirty doesn't sound like a lot, but it sure is if it's not conducive to what the neighbors like and what is gonna affect the neighbors. Um, it's not something that everyone's gonna be policing all the time for you, and I'm sure that you probably will do the right thing, but.
He's agreed, he's agreed to fifty. He's agreed to fifty. And if he can do his business under fifty, and hopefully it, it's much less.
What if it was fifty and no parking on, I, I don't even know if it's viable. We'd have to ask him if this, would he even keep considering this? But what if it was fifty with no parking on the, a button between the brook and Beech Hill Road, you know, that strip of road? So we never see fifty car, you know, say he sold the new car, right? We never see fifty cars.
Keep in mind, we're, we're considering this because he hasn't offered a parking plan.
Okay.
If he wanted to revise his application to include a parking plan, to show.
We're not parking there.
These are the only areas we'll park, then we could probably get away without any kind of a, a max number, right?
And that's, that, that's just it. I think we're at the stage where we, we need to tell him what we're happy with for parking.
I'm okay to compromise on forty.
And that's, you know.
I still, I like thirty more, but I'm okay to compromise on forty.
It's gotta be give and take sometime when, when we're doing things. I think forty is the reasonable number for all parties involved.
Agreed.
So we're potentially looking at forty, or you could choose to submit.
Site plan review for the parking.
This, this is it. If he wants to revise his plan and bring us a new one, he can, he can ask for a continuance.
Next, next month.
Well, can we do something?
Or we can just do this now without the revised site plan.
Could we do average of forty vehicles, but not to, average of forty vehicles throughout the month, but not to exceed fifty in anyone?
That gets really complicated.
It has to be something definitive.
That's not enforceable.
No.
I would not want to saddle our code enforcement officer with.
I know.
Time-weighted average of vehicles on the lot over a month.
Then you would have a drone.
Uh, you know, forty, forty vehicles, all-inclusive, I think it's the, is the area that we have to go.
Okay.
Let's say you, Mr. App, I'm sorry, can we ask him before we go with that? I know we're not changing, but forty sound more reasonable.
That sounds like what you guys want me to go with, so.
Okay.
All right. I have a big condition of approval.
I could go for a parking expansion later if I wanted to expand, or I could designate the parking in the future if I wanted to.
And it's.
Come back for a review.
Or site plan review. To the applicant's advantage to be an incredibly great neighbor, so that it'll be very easy for him to come back for ten more spots if he needs or.
Yes.
He needs. And the planning board can sit here and say, right? If, if that's.
Sure, yeah.
Sentiment of the public in, in the chairs.
Yeah.
Phil, did you have?
Yep, let me find.
You, you had a particular condition you wanted to add or?
I have a condition of approval that I'd like to propose to the board for consideration and for the, the applicant to consider as well. Um, and I'm going to cite the authority of our site plan review regulations, which state that in accordance with the provisions of RSA sixty-seven-four and sixty-seven-four forty-four, I'm sure RSA annotated as amended, Plymouth Planning Board hereby adopts the following regulations governing the development or change or expansion of use of tracks for non-residential uses or multifamily dwelling units. So this applies to any non-residential use. I am going to propose that we have a condition of approval that the site plan does not apply to uses other than vehicular sales and repair, including storage of earth materials, construction equipment, earth excavation, processing of earth materials. I know it's not what you want, but I asked you if you would be willing to amend your site plan and you didn't wanna do that.
Okay.
I, I believe that if you wanna do those things, you have to put it in your site plan and it needs to go to, to Z B A for a special exception.
Six months long process. Realistically.
If you wanna move forward with this, but all the other uses are gonna become non-compliant as soon as we approve this.
I understand.
I don't think we have another option, honestly. And, and I'm sorry, I know that, I know you've mentioned it's not, that auto service and repair is not your primary business, but that's what you're giving us tonight. And I think that in light of protecting the interests of the abutters and disclosing all of the potential uses on the site, I think we have to consider, considering this site plan with that condition.
I mean, implicitly, I think that's the case anyway, but to make it very clear, I think it's.
I, I think by making it a condition of approval, it makes it much easier for enforcement down the road.
I agree. I totally agree. Alright, um.
Would you mind reading that again?
Site plan does not, the, the approval of the site plan does not apply to uses other than vehicular sales and repair, including storage of earth materials, construction equipment, earth excavation, or processing of earth materials.
Do we want to put any of that order, I, I, I think that covers.
That list is, is just examples.
Okay.
It's not definitive.
Okay.
But.
It, it. I only asked it, I was wondering if we should put that in the language of our zoning ordinance, like industry and blah, 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 but um, but yeah, it's anything that's other than vehicular sales and repair is not approved.
Can we, can we say that?
He's given us an application for vehicular sales and repair.
We can either approve it or deny it.
And I'm, and I'm proposing we put that condition of approval on to protect the interest of the abutters.
It's just kind of underlining something that's already implied in only approving this one.
You're just, you're restating a, something that's in there, but that's.
Yeah. Doesn't actually change.
It's underlining it for emphasis, um, given some concerns we've heard from the public. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
That's, that's the reason I, I cited the authority in the site plan regulations as an introduction to that. Non-residential use, the site plan regulations apply to any non-residential use or multifamily use.
Just never heard of saying it quite that way. It is implied. We just need to.
And this board would have to vote to approve or disapprove.
I just think that we need to treat every, we always, not always, um, I don't know, I just treat everybody fairly and the same.
And, and I think.
I think that's what we're doing.
And that includes the public.
The abutters have asked for this. I think we're being fair to the abutters in stating this other, there, if, you know, without those elements being involved and included in a site plan, the abutters are not having the opportunity to express their concerns at a, at a special exception hearing with the Z B A.
I think it's okay. All you're doing is restating the, the rules that, of the zoning in the, I mean, it's, it's redundant, but it's setting your point, which is fine.
Yeah, okay. So, are we ready for a motion?
We need a motion to, I'm sorry, we need a motion to. Well, these are, these are just, we're discussing conditions.
Joseph has a list of potential conditions, I think most of which are relevant here. Um, and we're adding hours of business. We're adding the parking and we're adding the statement you just made. And.
I think I have all four of those written down.
And I think all the other ones, I think on a quick perusal here, um, as recommendations, makes sense. Condition that only, any fuel storage, um, which you might have, um, in some small amount, I imagine, for something like this, uh, comply with all applicable state and federal requirements. If you have to do anyway, but like, again, stating that.
E S as regulations.
And do we, actually, the one question is the last one, um, the last potential condition is, um, given land disturbance, do we want to? land disturbance, do we want to require a site reclamation bond or not?
He's not proposing any explanation, so.
So we don't need it.
And what were the hours? It was seven to five?
Yes.
What about Sundays? Did, did you say you didn't work Sundays?
I don't want to work Sunday.
So put Sunday in there.
We could make that binding.
Yeah, thank you.
Put Sunday in there.
You're welcome.
So the applicant has agreed to operate from seven AM to five PM Monday through Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
Or within those hours at least.
I will move. These will be public minutes, so if you have a significant other, you tell them, Sunday.
Yeah.
Make sure they don't see this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan with the following conditions. Limit, one is limit parking to forty vehicles total, including vehicles in for service, vehicles for sale, and employee vehicles. Condition two is that the site plan shall not apply to uses other than vehicular sales and repair, including storage of earth materials, construction equipment, earth excavation, or processing of earth materials. Three is that the applicant has agreed to operate under, from the hours of seven AM to five PM Monday to Saturday. The applicant will enter into a development agreement with the town and establish an escrow account for the, for construction inspection to be conducted by the town's engineer. And that, uh, fuel storage, any onsite fuel storage comply with the state and federal regulations.
And all necessary permits.
And all necessary, oh, and sixth is, is that the applicant will obtain all necessary state and federal permits. Is there another condition to add?
The development agreement.
State, federal, and local, that, I think the driveway permit is.
Okay, I will amend the last condition for state, federal, and local permits.
For the second point about operating as a vehicular sales, should we, in that portion where you have.
Wait, before we have discussion, I'll add to motion. Do we want to, we have a second?
It can be amended if needed, but.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Just curious.
A voting member has to second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
My apologies. Should it be, because you, you said those other thing, you know, the earth remover, things like that are examples, should it be including, you know, such as blah, 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 such as, but not limited to blah, 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 blah? Does, you know, clarify that's.
So I, I, I'm going to clarify the second condition to say the site plan does not apply to uses other than vehicular sales and repair, such as, but not limited to storage of earth materials, construction equipment, earth excavation, or processing of earth materials.
That's fine. That, that makes it more clear that that is a, examples of.
That is my amendment to my motions and Bradley, you need to second my amendment.
Bradford.
Bradford, sorry, thank you.
It's all right, uh, yes.
Bradford, thank you.
Did Sue mention the development agreement?
Uh, I did.
You didn't.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And abstentions, okay, thank you. Um, so the motion passes and the, um, application is conditionally approved, congratulations. And, um, yeah, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yes, thank you.
And you probably be.
You're welcome to stay.
Yeah, I'll give you a, you'll get a written notice of decision, including this list, in the next, within five, within five days.
I don't have time to think it in five days anyways. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going for sixteen and a half hours.
I need to go.
I'm gonna stick it out.
Well, it shouldn't be too much longer, hopefully. We do have this.
It's been a long day for me.
Informational and free application reviews. I'm hoping, no, Frank?
Frank?
Other business from members of the staff of the board and planning staff, Jason?
Yes, I think there's a typo in junkyard. Uh, any.
In the zoning ordinance?
Huh?
In the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
I'm shocked.
Any yard or field use for the storage or old materials, shouldn't that be of old materials?
Probably, yeah.
You mean like, old bed springs?
Storage or old metals. I think that should be storage of old metals, old bottles, solid textile, blah, blah, blah.
Good catch.
The goodness, the good news is we don't even need a public hearing and vote for that, we can just do a.
Yeah, that is a, we don't.
Administrative.
Administrative.
Administrative. So, oh, yes.
I have another, like, I'm sorry.
Go, 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 go.
Going back to our point about our application, I mean, shouldn't we look at our application and put someplace on the application thing of what is the table of use that this application falls under, so we don't have this.
It might be helpful.
I think we've talked about that before and it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, if the board wants, we can definitely update the site plan review application form to include a slot for that.
Do we need a, like, hearing and vote the way we do with a, like, updating our site plan review regulations and stuff like that? Or is that just a more administrative thing, or?
I do not believe there's any public hearing required. I think as long as I have clear, you know, direction from the board, what direction we want to go. If that's not the case, I will let you know at the next meeting and, and give you whatever that process is, if it's not something that, as long as the board agrees to, we can just.
All those here, though, are.
I think, I think it would add a lot of clarity really immediately for when we're looking at the cover of the application to know like what the intention is at the get-go. Yeah.
Makes the applicant see the actual use definition.
Yeah. It's helpful to them as well.
Yeah. I think we all learned a lot about what the ag zone is and isn't.
Yeah.
And, um, it was really eye-opening for me. When someone says it's the anything-go zone, I, I definitely think it's, they would get an eye-opening to watch this meeting. It's incredible that there are protections for, for the townspeople.
There are protections, and I think as we have discussed, um, and the community has said as well, there is room for more protections in some particular instances. And we'll talk about that at our next planning board meeting. All right. On the seventh of.
Let's leave it at that.
November. Sue.
Yep.
C I P, um, there's an issue of us approving the members of the C I P committee, which I'm assuming should not be a time-consuming process.
Nope. There's six people that have shown interest, the same people as last year. It's Mike, Michael Courier, Mark Halloran, Matt Yetton, myself, Ann Abear, and Scott Whedon.
Nice.
Who was the second to last?
Um, Ann Abear, she's the, she does all the finance.
She's the money person.
She's the finance director here for Plymouth.
And was Matt one of these people?
Matt was on there.
Oh, good.
And Zach Terrell is the select board's rep, but he's kind of the, their, their rep.
Have to throw that in there, um, so.
So if that's okay with everybody.
Same committee.
If there's anyone you can think of, um, that's, that's six people with seven being Zach, being the, um, rep. If it gets more than ten people, it gets a little cumbersome for scheduling, but if anyone would like to see someone on there, we certainly would entertain it.
What's that for?
Capital improvement program?
Yeah. Long-term budgeting, if you will, yeah.
Basically, yeah.
It's.
Are we gonna buy a fire truck?
Yeah, basically, anything that's over a certain, anything over ten thousand dollars in a non-recurring expense that the town plans to buy, like, so all the town departments submit a list of like, in five years, we're gonna need a ladder truck and in ten year, or in seven years, we're gonna need an ambulance. Like, every town goes through and maps out what they need. And, and it, it, yeah, it's a planning document so that you can kind of forecast when you need to expend money, so the years you're not expending money, you put money into a capital reserve, rather than raising it all from taxes the year you need it.
And everyone's taxes go up.
It's a budgeting tool. Oh, of course, it's, 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 yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a guiding tool that we provide to the select board and the budget committee, but, you know, they, they can, they don't have, they don't have to abide by it.
So just to make this.
It's a non-bid.
Just to make this official, we're gonna get a motion in, in a second and.
I'll, I'll move that, that we approve the nominated committee.
Yeah.
That's a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, all right, motion passes.
Thank you. And Joseph too is always there.
Are there any public comments?
No problem. Uh, no, other than a little useful.
No other than.
Please. Under our noise ordinance, might be helpful to know that there's no one in any of the departments in the municipality owns any technical equipment to measure noise.
Town did have a measuring device.
So if you want seventy or seventy-five at the boundary lines, you'll have to get your ears tuned up.
Thank you, sir.
We could buy a meter, but. It's pretty easy to get, but you don't have one, apparently. All right, um.
I would like to say thank you to our chair for shepherding us through that, those two meetings.
Not over yet.
I'd like to second that.
Second, third.
I'll take a vote now, um. All right.
Are there any members of the public that want to offer comment?
On the.
On the TV there?
On the TV, anyone on Zoom that wants to.
There's no one down there.
Uh, that's our A V gentleman.
Oh, okay, got it, all right.
I want to thank Matt for being on the C I P.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hey, do you have any comments for us, John?
I want to go home.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful night.